Everyone, please take your seats so we know how many seats are left. Thank you. Everyone, please take your seats so we know how many seats we have left. Thank you.
I think everybody can hear me if I speak up, and so I'm calling the meeting to order and we'll have roll call.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Baraline?
Here.
Trustee Jinks?
Here.
Trustee Kessler?
Here.
Trustee Lipinski?
Here.
Trustee Mackey?
Here.
Trustee Ruffo?
Here.
Trustee Spalding?
Here.
Trustee Spear?
Here.
Chair Ruiz?
Here.
Vice Chair Cristaldi?
Here.
And can you confirm public notice of the meeting?
Yes, confirmed.
Okay, we will now have a prayer from our campus minister. Separation of church and state. Thank you, sir, for offering this moment.
Thank you for being here or inviting me, and thanks all for showing up on my account. Thanks for the one laughter, I appreciate it. Good afternoon, special recognition to our chair, vice chair, interim chair, our president and the board, also to all the wonderful trustees and all the wonderful communities that are here today. Special recognition to you. My name is Reverend Henry, and it's an honor to be here today in this great assembling of God's sons and daughters who were called, sanctified, and preserved to do His will. I would like to share a few guiding principles that have lighted my path along life's journey when confronted with challenging moments, uncertainties, et cetera. And it's all, and these are, "With love and kindness have I drawn thee. Love your neighbor as yourself." And the question was asked, "Who is my neighbor?" And I'll ask you just to look around beside you, and that will answer the questions of who is your neighbor. Love is kind, patient, and just. Let us pray. Good and loving God, our source of love, light, and wisdom, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room with, we thank you. God, you have given us a great responsibility for this great institution, New College of Florida, and for all who work, all who work, teach, and study here. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect delight or detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Bless us as we begin this vital strategic work on behalf of New College of Florida with our students' future at the forefront of our decisions. It is our privilege and our responsibility to support, foster, and advance the mission of New College of Florida. Father God, help us to remember that nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for your good. Your word said that all things work together for the good for those who are called according to His purpose. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to fully understand. Help us to value and appreciate the workers, staff, faculty, and all your servants who are represented here today. Help us to take up this responsibility with honesty and integrity, respecting the gifts that each brings to our common endeavor. Give us foresight by which we plan for the future. Give us confidence to discover and explore new possibilities. Give us wisdom to discern what is right and good and just. We ask for your guidance and grace to use our talents for the advancement of this wonderful institution. Send your spirit of peace, respect, joy, comfort, esteem, and our brothers and sisters above ourselves to be with us in this meeting so that the discussions and decisions that are before us will be infused with the values we proclaim. We gratefully acknowledge your presence in our lives and in the life of this wonderful institution. We commit ourselves to our continuing search for the deepest meaning of the mission you have entrusted to us. We know that you are with us as you have been throughout our history, and so we go forward with confidence. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. So this is the part of the meeting where we have a call for public comment. We have lots of people who are interested in making public comment. It's required to make the request that you'd like to speak 48 hours in advance of the meeting, so we have a list of people who have done so. And I have a couple of requests to help those who want to make comment and hopefully help me as chair to get everything in to this short meeting time. So we will have one minute for each comment. If you want to combine with someone else, if there are parents or alumni or other groups who are wanting to speak on the same thing, you can yield your time to each other and stand together and select one spokesperson, and I will combine the time for that. And so I would, I'm going to call you up three at a time so that when one is done, the next one can speak. It'll be a minute, and you have about a 15-second grace. I really regret that the time is so compressed. Think about the three top points you would like to make, and that might help you get your comment across to us all. So I'm going to call Alisa Mitchell, Robin Williams, Kristin Miller, they're the first three. So they're in order of when they submitted, if anybody's wondering. It's not alphabetical order. Alisa?
Hi, thank you. My name is Alisa Mitchell, and my son is a first-year student here at New College. And I would like
I think everybody can hear me if I speak up. And so, I'm calling the meeting to order and we'll have roll call.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Baraline?
Here.
Trustee Jinks?
Here.
Trustee Karp?
Here.
Trustee Keenan?
Here.
Trustee Kessler?
Here.
Trustee Lipinski?
Here.
Trustee Mackey?
Here.
Trustee Ruffo? Trustee Spalding?
Here.
Trustee Spear?
Here.
Chair Ruiz?
Here.
Vice Chair Cristaldi?
Here.
And can you confirm public notice of the meeting?
Yes, confirmed.
Okay, we will now have a prayer from our campus minister. Thank you, sir, for offering this moment.
Thank you for being here or inviting me and thanks all for showing up on my account. Thanks for the one laughter, I appreciate it. Good afternoon, special recognition to our chair, vice chair, interim chair, our president and the board, also to all the wonderful trustees and all the wonderful communities that are here today, special recognition to you. My name is Reverend Henry and it's an honor to be here today in this great assembling of God's sons and daughters who are called, sanctified, and preserved to do His will. I would like to share a few guiding principles that have lighted my path along life's journey when confronted with challenging moments, uncertainties, et cetera. And these are, "With love and kindness have I drawn thee; love your neighbor as yourself." And the question was asked, "Who is my neighbor?" And I'll ask you just to look around beside you and that will answer the questions of who is your neighbor. Love is kind, patient, and just. Let us pray. Good and loving God, our source of love, light, and wisdom, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room with, "We thank you." God, you have given us a great responsibility for this great institution, New College of Florida, and for all who work, all who work, teach and study here. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect delight or detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Bless us as we begin this vital strategic work on behalf of New College of Florida with our students' future at the forefront of our decisions. It is our privilege and our responsibility to support, foster, and advance the mission of New College of Florida. Father God, help us to remember that nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for your good. Your Word said that all things work together for the good for those who are called according to His purpose. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to fully understand. Help us to value and appreciate the workers, staff, faculty, and all your servants who are represented here today. Help us to take up this responsibility with honesty and integrity, respecting the gifts that each brings to our common endeavor. Give us foresight by which we plan for the future. Give us confidence to discover and explore new possibilities. Give us wisdom to discern what is right and good and just. We ask for your guidance and grace to use our talents for the advancement of this wonderful institution. Send your spirit of peace, respect, joy, comfort, esteem in our brothers and sisters above ourselves to be with us in this meeting so that the discussions and decisions that are before us will be infused with the values we proclaim. We gratefully acknowledge your presence in our lives and in the life of this wonderful institution. We commit ourselves to our continuing search for the deepest meaning of the mission you have entrusted to us. We know that you are with us as you have been throughout our history and so we go forward with confidence. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. So, this is the part of the meeting where we have a call for public comment. We have lots of people who are interested in making public comment. It's required to make the request that you'd like to speak 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So, we have a list of people who have done so. And I have a couple of requests to help those who want to make comment and hopefully help me as chair to get everything in to this short meeting time. So, we will have one minute for each comment. If you want to combine with someone else, if there are parents or alumni or other groups who are wanting to speak on the same thing, you can yield your time to each other and stand together and select one spokesperson and I will combine the time for that. And so, I would, I'm gonna call you up three at a time so that when one is done, the next one can speak. It'll be a minute and you have about a 15-second grace. I really regret that the time is so compressed. Think about the three top points you would like to make and that might help you get your comment across to us all. So, I'm gonna call Alisa Mitchell, Robin Williams, Kristin Miller, they're the first three. So, they're in order of when they submitted, if anybody's wondering, it's not alphabetical order. Alisa?
Hi, thank you. My name is Alisa Mitchell and my son is a first-year student here at New College. And I would like to thank President Oker and the board and the staff and the faculty for providing him with an excellent start to his college education. My son is a National Merit Scholar and he chose New College because of its liberal arts curriculum, the ability to work closely with his professors, and the warm sense of community that's fostered on this campus. He and his classmates have done nothing to deserve the type of disruption that is currently happening to their education. As an actual Florida taxpayer, someone whose voice and vote counts just as much as anyone else's, I want to say that I think this school is an excellent use of my taxpayer money and it's an excellent school for my family, my Florida family.
Thanks, Alisa.
Sarasota was known for nature, culture, not culture wars. Mr. Ruffo, you morphed CRT to be the quote villain. You expanded to woke and grooming slurs attacking Black and LGBT communities. Moms for Liberty pushed anti-democratic laws, Don't Say Gay, book bans, and outlawing uncomfortable facts. We've witnessed the consequences, students afraid for safety, teachers afraid for their jobs, threatened with third-degree felony charges for books. In 1933, Nazis banned books and took over universities, first targeting liberal Frankfurt University to set an example. Holocaust education helps people draw connections from the past to today's realities and do something about it before it's too late. New College is the low-lying fruit. It's small, creative, liberal. We see through the metrics alibi for your coup meant to terrorize administrators, faculty, students. Lieutenant Governor Nunes intimidated, you'll move on to all Florida's colleges stating woke ideology was infiltrating. An attack on one is an-
So, Kristin Miller? And then I ask while she's walking up, Sonia Howman, Elizabeth Lenninger, and Betsy Brayden, if you'd line up and we can hear your comments.
Hello, my name is Kristin Miller and I'm the spouse of a retired disabled Army officer. Our daughter is currently attending New College using VA benefits for survivors and dependents in addition to scholarship money. My daughter selected New College because she could cultivate a very specific curriculum and make herself the most competitive person in her desired field of art history with a niche focus on fashion. And after using careful consideration, the ISPs are what gave her this competitive edge. I'm concerned your changes that you've outlined will not only affect the accreditation of New College, but also our daughter's ability to obtain her desired degree. Many New College students face the same challenges. Abrupt changes that you are proposing will impact the education and wallet for many of these students. I ask you to please do the proper research, talk to the current students on their terms, recognize these amazing professors and their classes, and see why we love New College and the model of education for our young adults. The data does not lie about its exemplary record, ranked number five in liberal arts only following the United States Service Academy.
Ms. Howman?
I'm gonna remove my mask so you can hear me. My child matriculated to New College and he was indoctrinated here. He became, and I'm gonna barely say this, a classics major. As trustees at New College, you are all duty-bound to act in the best interest of the existing student body. Mr. Spears, your brave decision to continue with the Tuesday meeting, your demonstrated contempt for the scientific method, you have already failed. Mr. Ruffo, Mr. Anderson, you publish anti-LGBT and anti-trans rhetoric. How could any reasonable person expect you to act as fiduciaries for this student body? And while discriminating against them is illegal, I ask that you recuse yourself not only from the curriculum committee, but from being trustees of this precious gift of an institution. That's all.
Dr. Lenninger?
I speak in support of the Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence, or OOIE. Over 25 of my colleagues and counting also support this statement. OOIE's work is vital to the success of our college. Some work is mandated by the State of Florida and the Florida Board of Governors such as our Equity Report and Civil Discourse Initiative, or by the New College Board of Trustees such as the Employee Satisfaction Survey. Much of OOIE's work builds relationships with our local community vital to our mission as a public college. OOIE does a lot more than that with a small staff. There's not enough time for me to explain so I'll highlight one instance of their fantastic work that I value as a professor here. OOIE staff administer many grants including the Berancic Scholarship. The Berancic Scholarship is a new privately-funded scholarship for high-achieving students with extraordinary financial need from Sarasota and Manatee Counties. Without the scholarship, the students would not be able to afford a New College education. OOIE provides Berancic Scholars enhanced advising support, financial counseling, and networking opportunities that are valuable to them. I have taught and mentored scholars and know how crucial OOIE is to their success. I urge you to support the Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence. Thank you.
I would like for Tracy Pharaoh, Eliana Salzhouwer, and Ali Abdelkader. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing names correctly. So, Ms. Brayden?
Good afternoon, my name is Betsy Brayden. I am a parent of a New College student. And why am I here? No parent can understand what it's like to have a transgender child until they have one. There's no playbook. So, why should New College accommodate students like my daughter? The real question is, why is my daughter attracted to New College? It seems many of the students that come here have determined that they don't necessarily fit into other schools. They embrace their differences and exhibit incredible bravery in staking their path forward. Students here are encouraged to build a curriculum based on their interests and talents. They don't have to fit in. They are critical thinkers. They thrive, they blossom, they go out into the world and contribute to the betterment of society. This is well documented. Why would you take this away from us? New College has evolved over many years into what is today, admin is no different than any other Florida state school.
Ms. Brayden, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Tracy Pharaoh, are you here? Tracy? Okay. Tracy, I understand you're speaking for Sherri Bennett, so you get two minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And thank you President Oker, Board Chair Ruiz, member of the Board of Trustees. My name is Tracy Pharaoh, I'm parent of a first-year student at New College. I'd like to start with trustee Ruffo. How dare you come to this school and speak to the students, faculty, parents, and public on the premise of liberating the students from being cultural hostages when you are the hostage taker? How dare you, how dare you bully your way onto a small diverse public college board and declare that the new New College will offer an alternative for conservative families in the state of Florida to say there is a public university that reflects your values as if conservative voters, over any other view liberal or not in this state, are more important than any other? How dare you believe that all Floridians agree with this obvious political power play? I know many Republicans and many Democrats that are currently disgusted with yours and the new board's members' hostile takeover of this school and the attempted removal of its campus's academic freedoms. But most of all, how dare you come to this college full of diversity and bring with you the threats of violence that could certainly arise to a tiny college of 700-plus students that cannot defend themselves, to a group of students that finally feel like they have found a place they could call home, finally feel that they have found a place that is safe where they can express their views and be who they are without ridicule or judgment? Believe me, these students have had enough ridicule and judgment already at their young ages enough to last a lifetime. How dare you do this, Mr. Ruffo, under the guise of equality, under the guise of a mandate from Governor DeSantis that we have yet to see? Is valuing the belief of one group over another, or is it ridiculing and bullying students that you promised to protect on social media in the governor's mandate too? And I ask that you, having children of your own, put yourself in the shoes of these students and parents. Wasn't too many years ago that you and your family were targets of violence, if I remember. Do you remember how angry and scared it made you when it was one of your own? My wish, albeit probably useless, is that you can find a way to respect the hope streams and lives of those that aren't yours. Trustee Spear, how dare you charge into this school and talk about freedom from indoctrination and in the same breath tell us that the first item on your agenda is to indoctrinate, removing the freedom of the professors to teach, the freedom of the students to learn, and trampling on the Constitution of the United States so thoroughly, that's not freedom? How dare you on January 25th grab one student's trembling hand while tears stream down her face and pretend to have a clue about their harassment and fear-
Eliana? Eliana Salzhouwer?
Good afternoon, I want to thank all of you for what you're doing here today because you have done what our outreach department has never been able to do. You have put New College of Florida on the map nationally and internationally. Everyone in the world is now aware of what an incredibly amazing institution we have here. And I'm expecting that our enrollment is going to go through the roof because there are so many brilliant children out there that don't know that this was the best-kept secret. And now the secret's out. So, I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for bringing prayer here. You know why? Because God help us if you guys are making the decisions about education for our children. And God is watching everything that happens in this room and she's not gonna be amused, not one bit. My son is a first-year student and he is studying the very woke subject of quantitative economics. It's so boring, he's so not woke, and it's so disappointing for me because I am quite woke. And I'm here and all of the parents are awake and all of America is awake now and all of the educators across the country. And every single parent out there should be concerned because what happens at New College is happening at your campus next. Mr. DeSantis, Governor DeSantis-
Ms. Salzhouwer, your time is up. I'm sorry. Ali Abdelkader? And if Ruth Beltran, Tamara Solem, and Carol Lerner could also come up? Is Ali Abdelkader here to speak? Not if you're not signed up. And your name? Your name? Just remind me when you get to the podium. Okay. Tell me your name, please.
Melanie Hubbard, New College graduate, '84, '88, PhD, Columbia, Bookout at Cambridge University.
So, you're not signed up?
No.
I'm sorry, I can't allow you to speak. We have to follow the rules. Ruth Beltran? Those who have signed up can speak for one minute. So, Ms. Beltran, would you proceed?
Yes, hi everyone. I am here to speak against what is happening here in New College. Where is the freedom? DeSantis and his cronies love to talk about freedom, but how come someone can come from out of state and try to decide the lives of students and parents here? Where is the democracy? Because we are living actually under the dictatorship of DeSantis. He is destroying public education to give it away for corporate interest. We also know that you're here taking over New College because New College is waterfront property. We know that, this is an incentive. So, just know that the people are organized, the people are ready to fight back, and we will not let you take over New College that easily. So, prepare for a fight because we are ready to fight. And at the end, I just want to say, who the hell are you to come into our communities and tell us what type of organization we're gonna have here? Get the hell out of our town.
Tamara Solem?
Hello, my name is Tamara Solem. I'm the wife of a United States Coast Guard member and my daughter Kari graduated from New College in 2020. Today, I speak for her and several New College alumni parents in saying we are extremely concerned about the possible detrimental actions of this new board under the direction of Governor DeSantis and the Florida Board of Governors. The goal of higher education should not be to create a homogeneous group of citizens, but to nurture broad thinkers and provide them with a safe environment for freedom of expression. Kari writes, "New College's principles of equity and diversity support its students in both their academic and individual growth. Removing support and enforcing personal ideologies at a public institution only serves to alienate those who do not align with the beliefs of DeSantis and his appointed trustees. However, rebranding these values does not erase the existence of the diverse educated populations that flock to New College. We are not going anywhere, we will protect the rights of a progressive education for the next generation of students." Thank you.
And if Sam Sharp, Jack Wallace, and Queen Zabriski could please come up?
My name is Carol Lerner. I'm a leader of a local organization, Support Our Schools, which focuses on protecting K-12 public schools. What I have learned these past few weeks that the same issues facing K-12 schools are at play here, it's the exact same playbook. The playbook for K-12: starve the schools, call them failing, strike fear in teachers, sow confusion through culture war, ban books, abolish diversity, take over school boards, fire superintendents. Sound familiar? That's what's happening here. It's the same people that are pushing it. Our governor and Mr. Ruffo has been a leader in this campaign. I pledge that I will be working not just for K-12, but for colleges and university. It's the same fight. We have to do this together, this has to spread throughout the state, and it's also spreading throughout the nation. Thank you.
Hello, I'm with New College Students for Educational Freedom and I'm here to say we reject your attacks on LGBT students. We statistically perform better academically when we are in infirming environments that allow us to thrive at our best selves. This is what New College offers to us and this is what we are here to defend. New College is one of the top five public liberal arts colleges in the country. We're a free-thinking institution that graduates talented engineers, scientists, journalists, entrepreneurs, artists, and so much more. It is home to a working, hard, intellectually curious student body that spurs innovation and vibrant discussion, where all ideas are presented and challenged. This is what's at stake today and what we're here to protect. The freedom to learn, the freedom to think, the freedom to be who I am, free from the government telling me what to do or who to be. We want to strive for a brave and liberated learning spaces where we are free to think critically and challenge the status quo and posit a better society for the future. We don't want to regress into a controlled, dogmatic, and historical revisionist academia that these folks all prepose it.
Is Jack Wallace here? Next on the list, Dr. Zabriski and then you.
Me?
Oh, he's a gentleman, thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm here speaking in support of the Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence, which has played an important role in protecting freedoms on campus. And I want to focus on one First Amendment right, the freedom of religion that the office has protected on campus. The office disseminates a calendar of religious observations to raise awareness of different practices in the accommodations, supported by the college as per the colleges, the Florida state, and the BOGS regulations. When the college's minister wanted to deepen his connection with students, OOIE was there to help the Reverend. OOIE worked with Student Affairs, Dining Services, and Muslim Students to offer iftar dinners for students during- dinners for students during the Holy Month of Ramadan, which was a first for the college. OOIE communicated with Student Affairs about the needs for kosher meals, the needs for kosher meals for Jewish students, and Hillel and faculty, resulting in students being able to have full kosher meals for the first time rather than having to make do with salad. These and other freedoms guaranteed by the Constitution, like freedom of expression, freedom of speech, are being threatened by what's happening now at New College in the state of Florida and nationally.
And if I could ask Chris Kotke, Garen Hoover, and Ron Silver to please come up, too. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Jack Wallace, and I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. DeSantis has made political appointees who are clearly racist, sexist, and anti-gay. You come here to a progressive school to try and shut out and destroy the schooling that they have here. You've been appointed because you will enact the racist, sexist, and anti-gay agenda DeSantis wants to create here at New College. The people and the students will not stand idly by while fascists try to change this school into something that it's not. You will answer to the people, and the people will make themselves known.
Good afternoon. I'm Associate Professor of Mathematics, and 68 of my faculty colleagues have endorsed this statement. Last week, Trustees Ruffo and Spear presented a vision for the future of New College as a competitive liberal arts program and a model of civil discourse which attracts high-achieving students of all backgrounds, beliefs, and ideologies. This vision aligns precisely with the direction for the college championed by President Oker from the beginning of her term. In her inauguration speech last year, she envisioned a New College where, and I quote, "People from all sides of the political spectrum are welcome, not as visitors, but as valuable, respected, and necessary members of our community. If we truly seek to produce the next generation of innovative leaders," and we do, "we must ensure that New College attracts talent from our entire community." In a short time, she has aggressively and effectively addressed the challenges we face in funding and enrollment. She's a strong and visionary leader who is determined to make decisions, even if unpopular, to best serve the long-term interests of the college. We fully support President Oker as the leader we need to realize the vision we share with trustees: a future of the college as an innovative, rigorous program which is a model of free speech, expression, and critical inquiry. Thank you for your time.
My name is Garen Hoover. I served as a Board of Trustee in this room for the last five years. Last fall, I gave my notice that I wasn't going to re-up. I kind of wish it was still on. But in any event, now that there is a new direction, I want to express some of my ideas. Admissions have been a struggle. Here are some recommendations. University needs to be in this institution's name. All the other 12 in the university system have it; we need it here. Canadians and Europeans look at colleges as trade schools; we're losing admissions from overseas. In addition to narrative evaluations, which are good, we should provide grades for all students. Some kids and parents choose not to come here because of grades are not given. It hurts our students on the back end, and it hurts us on the front end. There's $100 million in deferred maintenance that needs to be looked at. Finally, regarding number seven in your agenda, the collective bargaining agreement, I think you should vote no, primarily because the clause labeled differential pay inadvertently there was an overpayment to certain faculty members.
Thank you. Ron Silver. And then if I could ask Diego Valada, Eileen Perez, and Michael Sanderson to come up.
My name is Ron Silver, and I am staff at New College. I speak in support of President Oker. In April of 2021, after a thorough and diligent search, the Board of Trustees voted unanimously to offer the job of president to Pat Oker, and she started work that July. In the less than 20 months since, she's presided over the largest incoming class since 2016, the New College Challenge, among other things. I am fully confident she is the right person to continue leading New College, especially given the success of her performance in such a short time. I will point out that her predecessor was president for almost a decade. It would be unfair, unseemly, and unwise to remove President Oker, the first woman ever to lead New College, when she is just beginning the work the Board of Trustees tasked her to do. Thank you for your time and attention.
Buenas tardes, trustees. My name is Diego, and I teach theater. I speak only as myself. I rise today in opposition to initiatives mentioned in the agenda's preparation materials, namely the abolishment of DEI training and programming, along with the possible closure of the Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence. I am a professor. I'm primarily concerned with the well-being of my students. To that end, I feel compelled to share that there are more things in heaven and earth that are dreamt of in your philosophy. Your actions today, in concert with the invective rhetoric of your online persona, make my students feel hopeless. Many students came here to feel safe and access the education that is their right as Floridians. And the impulse to make this a place where race, intersectionality, and DEI are banned indicates to them that you want everyone to be the same, to be like you. They are receiving the message that they do not conform to your views, that they should go, because you neither see them nor care about them in being who they are. A fourth-year thesis student said to me today, they are disheartened about going out into a world that is like what you are trying to make here. It makes them feel hopeless and question, why should I even try? I guarantee you that DEI programming initiatives make me a better teacher, better able to respect.
Hello. My name is Eileen Perez, and I came to New College in 1998 as a transfer student from Miami. I'm a Cuban-American whose life was changed by the education, friendship, and fellowship I experienced here. New College didn't just teach me how to think critically and engage in thoughtful dialogue. It taught me that kindness is not weakness, that we are richer for our differences, and that all the wealth in the world means nothing without freedom. The freedom to be who we are, love who we love, and say what we think, that is democracy. What DeSantis and these trustees are proposing has more in common with dictatorial regimes than it does with any of the values that make America the country that saved my family so many years ago. A safe haven from oppression? Ooh, I'm shaking. Sorry, y'all. A safe haven from oppression, a land of opportunity. To abolish DEI programs and dictate what can and cannot be taught in an institute of higher learning is opportunistic, shameful, and cowardly. We are people, and here is not cons. Go fight Trump on your own merit, and please pick on someone your own size. Create each other with love and respect, and speak truth to power, no matter the consequences.
If I could ask Carla Correa, Amanda Gililand, and Patrick McDonald to come up. Please, thank you.
My name is Mike Sanderson, and I ask to speak about the election of the Board Chair specifically because I entered New College in 1999 from Miami Pompano Senior High School, and in 2001 as a student newspaper editor, and I got to know the first chair, Bob Johnson. Former Republican Senator Bob Johnson worked tirelessly to build up the independent New College in 2001 and after, as he worked to save New College by bringing in the state-university system before he was born. I also got to know General Heiser, longtime foundation president. I myself was an intern for Catherine Harris, Congresswoman Catherine Harris in Sarasota. I studied political science with Eugene Lewis, who is cited in James Q. Wilson's classic bureaucracy before my time, but I attended the memorial service for Jane Bancroft Cook, a longtime supporter and of the Bancroft family, and Dallas Dorr of the Durant Dorr Motor Company, better known as General Motors. New College is their legacy, too, and I generations of Floridians, as it existed in its current form, and I ask you to be conscious of their legacy in your roles as trustees.
Hello, my name's Carla Correa, and I'm here as a substitute teacher from the Tampa Bay area and as a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I'm here to reject fascism, reject white supremacy, reject homophobia, and reject the privatization of public education. We reject the focus on Christian fascist conservative ideology to promote capitalism because what has the free market done for students? It's put us in thousands of dollars of debt. And not only are we going to fight back against this fascist takeover, but we're going to fight for a better society where we pay all teachers a living wage, where we have qualified nurses, counselors, social workers, and librarians in every school, and where public-sector workers have strong unions, where there's no cops in schools, and where all higher education is free for all. And we will continue this resistance until victory because we are the majority in this society, and it's time we start acting like it. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Amanda Gil... Oh, is that on? Hi, I'm Amanda Gililand, and I'm here today as an alum to share a stat because at New College, we are taught to believe in facts and data. President Oker has already raised admissions by 30% in the year and a half that she has been the president. If you truly want the school to continue to grow, if you truly want to expand on what exists instead of demolishing what we already have, I would think that you would be interested in seeing what the woman who can raise admissions 30% in just one year can do with more time. I will also be reading a narrative evaluation from fellow alum Dr. Melanie Hubbard. This is from Mr. Ruffo's written and oral work. She said that his classroom demeanor is often provocative and adamant rather than inviting exploration and engagement. He proposes drastic actions while only pretending to justify them. When he does offer evidence, he misrepresents his sources, fails to critically assess their methodologies, and ignores their results. In his oral and informal arguments, Mr. Ruffo refers to the College of Florida Positioning Study of 2019. That study concludes that actually marketing New College is merely tolerant.
I am Pat McDonald, professor of mathematics. This is my 28th year at New College, and much has changed since I came, at New College, at other SUS institutions, and in the legislature. I've seen the market for students evolve rapidly as other SUS institutions have designed honors colleges. I've seen New College measured with metrics created with large institutions in mind. What I have not seen is a study of how other SUS honors programs perform against New College. There is data that suggests that honors programs perform quite differently, in-house honors programs perform quite differently than the general programs of which they're a part. In the interest of due diligence, I urge you to study other programs before making substantive changes here. Thank you for your time.
My name is Lisa Schur. I am a Sarasota resident and the mother of a child who will be entering college soon, and I would be thrilled beyond belief if she entered this college. I'd like to begin with a quote that is often attributed to Abraham Lincoln, although there's no definitive proof that it originated with him. "You can fool some of the people all of the time, and all of the people some of the time, but you cannot fool all the people all the time." Perhaps even more accurate, James Server stated, "You can fool too many people, too many of the people, too much of the time." This is the dystopian universe in which we now find ourselves. Fortunately, we have this younger generation. They cannot be fooled, and they're not falling for the nonsense being pushed in dear leaders' culture wars. These are the students of New College of Florida. These are the students who actually do believe in diversity, equity, and inclusion. These are the students who will fight against policies which seek to disenfranchise individuals on the basis of their sexual orientation. These are the students that want to learn the full history of this country in all of its glory and shame. We stand with the students of new faculty because no matter if you fool some of the people or all the people, the truth...
Is Joshua Epstein here? Raise your hand if you're in the audience so I can give you time to get up. Okay, doesn't appear so. Thank you all for your comments. So Joshua's asked you to present for him? All right.
As the New College Board of Trustees, you have a solemn duty... As the New College Board of Trustees, you have a solemn duty to act in the best interest of everyone on this campus. Trustee implies the word trust, and at this moment, with your public statements, comments, and actions, I feel certain that no student, faculty, parent, or guest here today can say the trustee's names and the word trust in the same sentence. As parents of these students, we want our children to have the freedom to learn, to be themselves, and to grow up healthy and safe. We want them to have access to quality public education that is accessible to a diverse group of students across Florida without fear of being indoctrinated into the conservative right-wing agenda. We want New College's stated commitment, a balance between recognizing and celebrating difference, respectfully supporting each other's growth, and ensuring that historically marginalized and oppressed groups are not experiencing trauma and harm to continue unchanged. Most of you have no experience running a public institution of higher education. You are not from Florida, and you have no ties to the state. Governor DeSantis is appointing unqualified people to this board with the sole intent of making this college and the students and faculty political pawns in his race to the White House, and he is attacking the institutional independence of the university by doing so. You have come in like a Trojan horse and destroyed the values we have instilled in our children.
So I want to thank everyone for their public comments, and I'm going to take the prerogative of the chair to switch some agenda items. Rather than doing announcements, I want to do the consent agenda first so that we have taken action on some routine items that we can get off our list of things to do. So the chair will entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda. I'd like to... So Trustee Keenan moves.
I would like to move, excuse me, I'd like to move that bullet item three and four be removed, and we approve the first two bullet items. I believe that we need to give the board more time to look over these things.
So you would like to remove bullet item three and four under action items?
Correct.
To discussion.
To the next meeting. It's a table.
You're free to move it to discussion, but not to the next meeting. It's on this agenda for action. So I have a motion from Trustee Keenan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Ruffo. Discussion.
Wait, he...
What's the motion on the table?
Yeah, can we just have clarification?
The motion on the table is the approval of consent agenda.
I think especially the third item, it's a curricular matter. I think it would be inappropriate to bring it up this time before we have an opportunity to have a fuller assessment, and I would like to see it postponed until we have an opportunity to do so.
This has been reviewed by the Academic Affairs Committee, and it's essential to a requirement of the Board of Governors to implement our improvement plan, to which dollars are attached to.
I don't believe we can adequately review this in approval, given the amount of time that we've been on the board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
I could be wrong on this, and I'll defer to Mr. Smoker, but I think the action right now is whether, I think it's the prerogative of any board member to remove from the consent agenda any item they would like for discussion. And Trustee Spear, I think what that means is we would then take up separately whether we defer it or... we defer it or approve it or not, and then, so it doesn't take any action. So Mr. Smoker, is that correct?
That's correct.
So bullet items three and four, thank you for the clarification, are removed to the discussion agenda, not the consent agenda.
And I'll then, I think we have a motion on the table in a second, so either that can be removed, or we would have to vote on that motion.
You have a motion?
I'm with trustee Spaulding. I need clarification on what motion we're voting on. So what is the motion that we're voting on?
You, you had two items that were requested to be removed from the consent agenda, and a board member has a right to request it be removed and to have it go to discussion.
Okay.
So essentially, what you have is a motion to approve the consent agenda without the two items that were requested to be removed.
Any questions? Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, discussion. Would you like a presentation?
No, I'd like to move it to the next meeting.
Is that a motion?
Yes. I move that we move the bullet item three and four to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Do I have a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the second?
I did.
Trustee Spaulding. All right, all in favor say aye. This is to, to defer this item to the next meeting, cautioning that this could put at risk dollars for New College.
Madam Chair, can, can we just have a moment? I'm sorry, can we just have a moment of discussion? Before we vote, I just would like to have someone on staff who's responsible for these just speak to any ramification of deferring it, if there is any. If there's not, that's perfectly fine.
So who would like to speak to the item, the, the impact of the item being deferred?
Are we doing them both? It's a package of two, or are we discussing item, current item three?
It'll, it'll be separately. First for the item number three.
Can you please approach the podium, so we can hear you? Thank you.
This is Provost Sherman.
Okay, so, New College has a lot of academic programs. We do not, most of our academic programs fall under the liberal arts SIP code. However, we have many programs under that liberal arts SIP code that are actually areas of strategic emphasis, from the point of view of the Board of Governors. They have a list of areas of strategic emphasis. And so by changing our psychology and our economics programs to these two new SIP codes, we will benefit from the fact that these are now reflective of these areas of strategic emphasis. These, these two SIP codes belong to areas of strategic emphasis. It does not change our psychology or economics programs.
So these are, these are not new programs?
They are not new programs. They are programs that have been in existence, and they are very research and experimental-heavy programs. And that is why these SIP codes make sense. Those two areas of study should not be within our liberal arts SIP code. They should be within these areas of strategic emphasis.
Provost Sherman, what are the implications of deferring this item? I think that was the question that the trustees were asking.
Yes. So the implications are that when these are moved into the areas of strategic emphasis, they will improve our performance-based funding metrics. One of the metrics is percentage of students graduating in areas of strategic emphasis. We have a large number of students that graduate in psychology, a very research and experimental-rich psychology program, and we have a lot of students that graduate in economics, a very quantitatively-based economics program.
So this isn't, in essence, a technical change of the code, not a change in the...
That is exactly what it is.
Are there questions?
What, what budget implications having to do with teaching lines are implied in this change?
So it doesn't have anything to do with teaching lines. The budget is based on our student success plan that we were, were required to put together.
Could I, could I sort the question out? Because I'm not sure if you're asking, I think trustee Sherman is talking about revenues, but I suspect you're talking about expenses. Would you clarify what your question is?
Yeah, I mean, my, my general concern is I think that to make a decision now about something that has implications for curricular matters and teaching lines and serious questions like that should be deferred. I'd really see it done as part of a broader context of a full assessment of the curriculum.
What, what we're being told is it doesn't change any teaching lines or any curriculum. It's a change in the code.
I'm not, can, I would like more time to look at this and to go over all this, and so...
So thank you, trustee Sherman. Would we like to proceed to, does anyone want to make a motion?
Can I comment?
Someone wanted to comment, yes.
Yeah, so as a part of the Academic Affairs Committee, we met last week. So this doesn't, this doesn't change anything about the program, it's just how it's classified by the state, and it's actually changing it to be a little bit more accurate. And so this is really important, because I think for performance-based funding, the deadline's the 13th, if anyone knows the specific. So we won't meet before the next time that we have to have these numbers done, and I believe it was $900,000, that's kind of on the line, that we need to improve these metrics. So there's, there's almost no change really happening, it's just how the state classifies these courses. So there was no, there was no change to the psychology or economics departments or the classes or anything in those.
So I understand what you're saying, but I don't know what I don't know. And so I'd like more time to look this over.
Thank you, trustee Spear. Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion concerning this item?
Madam Chair, I, I think trustee, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think trustee Spear made a motion to table, and I think it was seconded by trustee Spaulding, so we have a motion before the discussion.
Okay, so, yeah, just the one item. So the motion is on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Hold on a second.
I think we're gonna have to call.
Could you repeat, could you repeat that? Tell me which one it is. Could you repeat the motion, as you understand it?
I, I think trustee Spear, if I might, I, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth that loud.
No, please, it's helping.
I understood you made a motion to table item three till our next meeting.
Yeah, so that is the motion, so I'm, I'm an aye for that.
All right, I think because, we, we need to do a roll call vote, because I, this, with this room and the acoustics, I'm not sure where everybody stands, so...
Quick clarification, so this would be tabling it until the February meeting? Is that correct?
So roll call, please, for the vote. This would be a vote to table this item until the next meeting.
Can we raise our hands, so we could see it?
We're, we're gonna do roll call.
Oh, okay.
Trustee Anderson? Yes or no vote?
No.
Trustee Bauerline?
No.
Trustee Jinks?
Yes.
Trustee Karp?
No.
Trustee Keenan?
No.
Trustee Kessler?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
No.
Trustee Mackey?
No.
Trustee Ruffo?
Yes.
Trustee Spaulding?
Yes.
Trustee Spear?
Yes.
Chair Ruiz?
No.
Chair Cristaldi?
No.
So the motion fails. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
I was just gonna say that trustee Spear, I think, I don't think it precludes us from retaking up the issue at the next meeting if you so choose to do that.
That's correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's correct. Is there a motion? Anyone would like to make? Chair will entertain a motion concerning the item of approving the student success plan completion.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, madam chair?
The chair will accept a motion if anyone chooses to make a motion concerning the item approving the student success plan completion, the third bullet.
I'll motion to approve.
I think that's the one we just did.
We chose, we voted against...
Tabling it. Oh, I see, I'm sorry, madam chair. Sorry for my confusion.
Acting. Well, you can add my confusion to it. I'm trying to keep up with it. So is there a motion concerning this item?
I'll motion to approve.
Trustee Keenan, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So I think we'll do another roll call. All in favor?
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Bauerline?
Yes.
Trustee Jinks?
Yes.
Trustee Karp?
Yes.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Kessler?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
Yes.
Trustee Spaulding?
Yes.
Trustee Spear?
No.
Trustee, or Chair Ruiz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cristaldi?
Yes.
All right, so the, the motion, the motion passes. The next item is direct support organization budgets for New College development. If I could have our, Mr. Kinsley come up and explain this requirement?
Thank you, madam chair, trustees, President Oker, Chris Kinsley, VP for Finance Administration, CFO. This is in accordance with a regulation adopted by this board. In June, the state, the Board of Governors and state law requires that direct support organizations' budgets come before the Board of Trustees, and we have two. We have the New College Development Corporation, and we have the New College Foundation. New College was a bit late to implement this, but we have implemented this requirement. These are the budgets for '22, '23. They've been properly voted on and approved by the respective boards of the foundation and the New College Development Corp., and it was reviewed by the Finance and Administration Committee last week and moved forward for approval that way. That is why it was on the consent agenda. I will say this, we're halfway through the year, to my estimation, this is an item that could be deferred until the next meeting if there's questions or concerns.
Yeah, I have some information. I received an urgent memorandum from the chief compliance officer who pointed out to me that the actual hard dollar contributions last year were $800,000 approximately, while operating expenses were 2.3 million. They papered over some of those by pulling from endowed funds, but still had a deficit of $600,000. And I, I just don't think it's responsible for us to make any decision sending new prerogatives, new, new budget approval for an organization that spends 2.3 but only raises 800,000.
So just to clarify, trustee Ruffo, this is not a new budget. This is a new requirement to approve the budget, which has been in place since July, and we can defer it and have a presentation.
I think that we should. But I'm just saying that, look, let's be honest about the numbers, and any professional fund raisers...
Well, sir, we haven't seen the numbers yet, so I think that's what people want.
Sure.
So we will, we will defer this item so that you can get additional information, since that seems to be the sense of the trustees. Anybody?
Madam Chair, if I, if I might just provide a little more clarity to, as the chair, as the, maybe the past chair now of the Finance Committee, but trustee Ruffo, these, these are direct support organizations, which are private, independent, 501(c)(3) entities that are organized by statute to support the university. So their budgets are not any kind of state dollars and are not part of our budget, and I'm fine with us deferring it, because I don't think there's any implication. But as we all review the information, these are the independent foundation.
Sure.
And because it's set up to support the university, we have an opportunity to look at an overall approved budget, but it doesn't, it's not co-mingled with the funds of our organization. I just want to make sure.
Thank you for the clarification. Trustee Ruffo, did you want to make a motion to defer it?
Sure, yes.
Second?
Second, second.
Okay, trustee Lipinski, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We'll defer it to the next meeting. So now I need a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, just to be clear, those are the minutes from the October 18th, 2022nd, and December 6th, 2023.
Two minutes, right? And the review of the audited financial statement.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Did I hear a second? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? All right, so the consent agenda's been approved. Now we're gonna move back to announcements. The Board of Governors has contacted me and has acknowledged what a heavy lift it is, and I see trustees trying to rise to the occasion of dealing with items when you're new, and there's so many of us who are new. We're trying to onboard everyone and get information to you, and I'm sure it feels like maybe drinking from a fire hose, because this packet was almost 150 pages. So I, I have sympathy for, for those who are trying to jump on a moving train. So the Board of Governors has asked if they could come to the next meeting, the chancellor and the general counsel for the Board of Governors, as well as our Board of Governor liaison, Alan Levine, to come and offer an orientation about requirements to help us kind of get up to speed quickly. So I accepted the invitation, and we'll put it on the agenda for the February 28th meeting as they requested. So that's one announcement that I had to make. And trustee Spaulding, did you have an announcement?
Yeah, if, if I, if I could, I actually wanted to make a, a brief comment about New College and its mission in the form of, and then end with a motion. As a new trustee, I've actually been reading a lot about the history of New College and its fascinating history, how it was founded by community leaders working with congregational Christians who wanted to found a college here in Florida reminiscent of what they had done in Harvard and Yale on a classical liberal arts curriculum. They also insisted on the absolute denial of race and creed as having any basis in the purposes and policies of the college, and they called it New College, evoking New College Oxford. In '75, it was almost 50 years ago, New College joined the state university system as part of the University of South Florida. In 2001, New College became an independent member of the state university system. When New College became a responsibility of the state of Florida, the intended purpose as codified in law was to serve its distinctive mission as a residential liberal arts honors college of the state of Florida. To meet that mission, the college has four goals: provide a quality education to students of high ability, who because of their ability deserve a program of study that is both demanding and stimulating; second, to engage in educational form by combining educational innovation with educational excellence; third, to provide programs of study that allow students to design their educational experience as much as possible in accordance with their individual interests, values, and abilities; and fourth, to challenge students not only to master existing bodies of knowledge, but also extend the frontiers of knowledge to original research. Those gathered here have been entrusted with guiding and preserving this college, ensuring that it is well governed and fiscally sound. It is especially our responsibility to make sure the college remains focused on its mission. Some have said this, recent, recent appointments amount to a partisan takeover of the college. This is not correct. We have been appointed by the governor of the state of Florida, or by the Board of Governors of the state of Florida, along with the faculty representative and the student representative, the president, of course, and the governor and the Board of Governors, this being a public institution, act in accordance with the laws of the state of Florida, passed by the elected legislature representing the people of Florida. We've all sworn that we will well and faithfully perform the duties of trustee of New College, that we do here, everything we do here must be understood in those terms. Everything the Board does is guided by that mission, advancing that mission and preventing the college from going astray or getting captured for other purposes. A well-constructed program of study in liberal arts teaches one how to think, not what to think. It liberates the mind from prejudice and narrow-mindedness, but also political ideology, horus and dogma, or whatever methodology is academically in vogue. It's not a takeover, it's a renewal, ensuring New College is strong, is true to its longstanding mission so that it may grow and flourish as a unique institution within the state of Florida university system. I think we should all embrace that purpose, and with that in mind, as recognition of our responsibility and a sign of our good faith, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution, this resolution. The Board of Trustees reconfirms its commitment to the distinctive mission and supporting goals of New College, as adopted and promulgated in Florida law, and pledges to uphold, maintain, and insist on that mission in any and all governance and educational reform efforts. Thank you.
So that's a motion.
That's a motion.
I second.
And a second. Discussion?
I'm sorry, trustee Spaulding, could you just read that one more time?
The Board of Governors reconfirms its commitment to the distinctive mission and sporting goals of New College, as adopted and promulgated in Florida law. That's chapter 1004, section 32, and pledges to uphold, maintain, and insist on that mission in any and all of its governance and educational reform efforts. The, the point here is that there, there's been a fraught debate. I think as a sign of our good faith and to show our responsibility to the college, to reconfirm our commitment to that mission.
Thank you.
Point of order is the Board of Trustees?
I, I'm in a pickle here, because I appreciate the sentiments and certainly agree with good intentions, but this resolution is not on the agenda, it's not in written form, and it's not been reviewed by council. So could I respectfully request that we take it up on the next agenda? And because interest, in interest of pursuing it, it's, it's not really to... Because interest of pursuing it, it's not really to form to take up items not on the agenda without public notice and review, but I truly appreciate the sentiment, and I hope that we will take it up at the next meeting. That's permissible to the Senate.
No, I'm fine with that. I think that we would miss an opportunity, not for a majority of the Board, indeed all of the Board, to just recommit ourselves to that mission. I think that's a signal that is needed right now in this community, in this college. College is a partnership. Our commitment is to abide by the mission of this college. It's got a good mission, it's got a great history. I think we are missing an opportunity, not for us to immediately commit in a general way to the mission of this college. I understand your point.
I think we can take a sense of the Board, and so I'll accept comments to get a sense of the Board.
Madam Chair, I appreciate Trustee Spalding's comments, and it echoes a sentiment that I feel as well, so I'm inclined to support, be supportive of it. I think I understand your points about point of order and actually voting on something, but to the extent that we're just expressing our commitment to this mission and what it is and how important it is, and I think it's timely for Trustee Spear to raise that because we've seen a lot in the media trying to tell us as a Board what we should be doing.
Trustee Spalding.
I'm sorry, Trustee Spalding, sorry, sir.
Others?
Yes, I just wanted to say I'm in complete agreement. I think this is a really good idea. I think just for next time, it be included in the agenda so that we all have the time to review it, so we know exactly. I just pulled it up on my computer, but I know not everyone has that on them, but I think that's a really fantastic idea.
Agreed. Would others like to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to, at some point, have a deeper discussion, put together a committee, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Governors regarding the mission. So I'd like more time and more discussion than...
Thank you.
I share Trustee Spalding's sentiment.
Thank you. Others?
I share Trustee Spalding's sentiment. I like the framing that we're here to teach students how to think, not what to think.
Thank you. Others?
I like the idea of the sentiment too, and further discussion, discussing it at the next meeting, I'm in favor of.
Yep.
Agreed.
So I think you have a sense of the Board, that we truly appreciate this proposal, and we'll take it up next time. We do have to be concerned about the sunshine law, which requires public notice, requires things to be on the agenda, and so it is something that we have to work with. So pop-ups are frowned upon under the sunshine, but I think you have a firm endorsement of this Board, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Trustee Spalding. So I too have some announcements. New College is at the crossroads of change, and change has two components. One is what should not change, what should be preserved, and the other is what needs to change to really realize the potential of the mission. And across the generations of students and faculty and staff, there's been consistent themes about the academic traditions that should be preserved at New College, that are part of our DNA, that are part of our core values. And I characterize them as follows: the convening of first-class minds, academic excellence and rigor, the new college contract system, narrative evaluation of student work and place of grades, faculty-student ratios of no more than 1 to 10 to allow for small classrooms, and vigorous debate, experiential learning that includes career exploration and service to community and undergraduate research supported by intensive study periods and the senior thesis. These are the core themes that have been consistent across the generations of students. There are also consistent themes of light of what needs to change, and that includes student residential life, which is marked by 38.8 million in overdue maintenance of dorms, insufficient technology in the classrooms and in internet, and limited food options. We are in a food desert here. I think those are students. We have enrollment numbers which are too low to allow for the full scope of the New College residential and academic experience. We have faculty salaries which rank in the bottom quartile of the state university system. We have an overtaxed staff paid at below-market rates who must meet the same institutional requirements as Florida's largest colleges, and that is a burden. We have deferred maintenance of non-residence buildings of 22.6 million, and we all agree, because we're working on it through the New College Challenge, of insufficient resilience for natural disasters such as rising waters and hurricanes. So these are some consensus points that I hope the Board will take into account as we do our work. Change can bring success or failure, it's a high-risk proposition, and successful change at New College is achievable only if we honor the academic traditions that have made New College the number five top public liberal arts college, and as one of our speakers mentioned, we might aim our sights higher, but I think that the Naval and Air Force Academies in West Point are setting a high bar for us to go head-to-head with them. While New College students do not receive grades, I regret to inform this Board of Trustees that we get a report card. And these are metrics to which the governor, the legislature, the Board of Governors hold all state universities' boards accountable. And at the end of a year, we will know whether this Board improved those metrics, sustained them, or experienced a reversal. And so to succeed, we can't lose sight of those metrics, and I'm happy to report that many success factors exist where New College handily achieves excellence. The average cost to student is among the lowest in the state, in a state that is the lowest in the country, resulting in the majority of Nova collegiate's graduating with no debt. The average time to degree in a really rigorous program for first-time in college students is less than four years. 100% of our students engage in research, 93% of our students engage in at least three high-impact educational endeavors, and I know that our educators will know what those are. There are additional success factors where New College cannot yet declare victory but has achieved impressive gains. We've heard about the 30% increase in fall 2022, first-time in college students, compared to a state increase of 1%. And this class has a higher GPA and SAT than the class before them, so quality is not sacrificed. We've had an almost 100% annual increase in fall 2022 of state college transfers compared to a state decline of 17%. And our nationally award-winning career education efforts to involve career exploration, assessment, and achievement while a student has hold great promise in advancing the numbers of students employed or in graduate school one year after graduation. We struggle with this because that bar is now 40,000 a year. We know that liberal arts students, over 10 years, our salaries rank near the top of all state universities in Florida after 10 years, but the metric is one year, and so we have to condense the amount of time that our students can be recognized in their careers for the success they will ultimately have. There are other success factors where we need the focused attention of this Board. We are not achieving the goal, and they are: four-year graduation rates in the mid-50s, six-year graduation rates in the mid-60%. This is not, our goal is much higher, and we need to focus on graduation rates, and the foundation of that success relies on retention of first-year students, which is at 80% now, or a little less. So these are areas of concern where we frankly are not meeting our goals, and I commend the trustees to keep these measures in mind as you make every decision. Are you forwarding these things? Are we holding them back? Are we damaging them? And I think this Board of Trustees can play a big role in welcoming new students, encouraging current students to persist in their education, and in conducting change in a manner that seeks to engage our students, parents, faculty, and staff. I think that is what our success is going to be based on in the future. So let's get to work. Thank you. Next is our President's Report.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the trustees. We're proud to welcome you here today. I'd like to begin my report with a sincere and heartfelt thanks to the students, faculty, staff, and administrators of New College. In the 19 months that I've had the privilege to serve as President, I have witnessed tremendous work and commitment to this college. Students choose New College because they simply have a passion for intellectual challenges. Whether it is Roman law, the behavior of adolescent sharks, or Gothic literature, New College students are here to learn, and the faculty and staff who devote themselves to these pursuits recognize the responsibility and privilege of supporting these scholars. Weekly, if not daily, there is evidence of the extraordinary scholarly achievement happening here at New College. Today, I'm proud to share with you just a few of the latest examples. First, congratulations to Joshua Ingram, a graduate student, I don't know, is Josh here? A graduate student in our Applied Data Science Program, who was recently announced as one of 25 graduate students in the United States to receive a prestigious quad fellowship, which recognized students from four countries who are seeking graduate degrees in STEM fields. A first-generation college student from Bradenton, Florida, Joshua previously earned his bachelor's degree from New College in statistics and applied mathematics. His accomplishments are both extraordinary and in many ways representative of the student experience at New College. With the support of his faculty advisors, Joshua secured impressive internships at NASA and the Harvard Smithsonian Center for Astrophysics. I remember when he first told me about that. He was quite humble about his internships. His thesis focused on statistical modeling of solar flares, which he tells me pose significant threats to satellites. And like many New College students, he is passionate about student clubs and co-founded the Astronomy Club, which is one of the largest on campus, and he has worked individually with our professional staff in our Career Center, which supports students seeking national and international fellowships. Congratulations also to Veronica Lee, who graduated this past May. Veronica recently won second place in a national undergraduate statistics competition. Veronica completed an area of concentration in statistics with a secondary field in museum studies. Veronica came to New College planning to study art history, but along the way fell in love with statistics, and because of the flexibility of our academic program, Veronica did not have to choose between these two passions. Finally, congratulations and a sincere good luck to the six current New College students who were recently notified that they are advancing in the Fulbright interview process. And also our two additional students who are moving ahead with critical language scholarships. New College has a proud tradition of tremendous success with national fellowships, especially Fulbright's, and we send our very best wishes to these students. The purpose of the President's Report is to provide the trustees an update on strategic initiatives. Selecting topics to feature is always a challenge because of the many positive activities and accomplishments here at New College, and today I want to focus on three important initiatives: career education, retention, and enrollment. And for the purposes of our new trustees, I will provide a bit of background to each initiative. First, career education. The New College of Florida approach to career education is based on the belief that career support is not a service to our students, but instead a fundamental part of their education. Students are paired with career coaches before they even arrive on campus. Our faculty are trained to integrate career education into the curriculum, and the college maintains a strong emphasis on internships and community-based learning, with additional opportunities in entrepreneurship and micro-credentials. Our approach to career education is already earning national attention. We've earned a College of Distinction designation in career development for the last three years. There are many reasons behind this focus on building a world-class career education in the liberal arts. Most importantly, it benefits our students, but also future employers and the state of Florida. But investing in career education is also a fundamental strategy in our plan to improve New College's performance in statewide metrics. Career education is most certainly a factor in the recent success we've had with recruiting new students, and our investments in career education will, we believe, lead directly to improvements in the percent of graduates employed or continuing their education. This is metric number one in the state's performance-based funding model. Our goal is intentionally ambitious. We believe that we can move from last to first in the SUS in this metric within just a few years. And the college has made, in recent, literally in the last year and a half, necessary and sometimes difficult decisions to make this possible. Two updates are especially timely today. A year ago, our Career Center was squeezed into a tiny office without technology or the ability to conduct real or mock interviews. Today, they are in the final stages of moving into a nearly 4,000-square-foot of dedicated space, which includes an interview room equipped with technology for virtual interviewing, a classroom space, and a conference room, and this allows us to have much deeper engagement with employers. And this past year, we've significantly expanded the integration of career education within our curriculum. I'm going to provide just one example, and apologies to the faculty who are doing the same work, but three core faculty in our Health, Culture, and Societies area recent developed a new professionalization seminar. Students attend regular meetings with health professionals in Florida, ranging from medical, social work, and grief counseling, to health entrepreneurship and urban planning, and the course features strong community partnerships with organizations such as the Florida Department of Health, Easter Seals, Tidewell Hospice, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and from what I hear, which was the big hit this time, the Sarasota County Mosquito Management Services. These partnerships are leading directly to internships for our students, and I can tell you that these kinds of educational experiences would not happen without the full partnership of faculty and staff. This does not happen when career education is delegated to being a service center where students go simply to have their resumes reviewed. Ours is an entirely different model, built on preparing our students for their real-world future. The second initiative I want to focus on is retention. Over much of our history, New College's retention rate has not changed much, and it does remain significantly below that of top-ranked liberal arts colleges. I've spoken many times about this topic. There's no one cause and no simple solution, and I cannot emphasize enough that some of the biggest factors on our campus, most importantly, the quality of residence halls, require identification of new resources and long-term investments. However, even as we work toward addressing those larger issues, the New College community has embraced retention as a campus-wide priority, and faculty, staff, students, administrators are working together to make a difference. One of the most exciting initiatives, and please understand, I am just picking out a few of the examples, but one of the most exciting is the launch just this month of a new type of independent study project designed specifically for first-year students. As many of you know, we have a January term called the Independent Study Project, or ISP, and it's a time of intense scholarship, and I believe it is one of the defining features of our curriculum. I want to share a confession. When I first joined New College, I was a bit skeptical when alumni and faculty alike boasted that the New College theses were close to graduate-level work. I remember thinking, do they really think that New College students are that much smarter than students elsewhere? Since then, my skepticism, yes, but in fact, my skepticism has transformed into awe. I am not going to argue that our students are smarter, perhaps I will do that privately. What I will say publicly, and I have, I'm absolutely committed to this fact, is it's because our curriculum is designed intentionally to develop students' ability to complete large, complex projects. At most honors colleges, students... At most honors colleges, students do independent work in their final year, the senior thesis. That's fairly common. That's not what we do here at New College. Here, students complete an ISP in year one, and year two, and year three. Just last week, students here at the college were completing projects on everything from an 11th-century monk to mathematical foundations of thermodynamics and to the health of our local watershed. No wonder that these students are fully prepared for an ambitious thesis project by their final year. And the newly-designed immersive ISPs that add a component that builds peer relationships is an important innovation that I believe will boost student success here at New College. And finally, a few words about enrollment. I'm going to summarize my comments a bit more than I planned because Chair Rez has also identified that the Board of Governors has recently released their data that indicate a 7% system-wide decline in AA transfer and less than 1% increase in first-time in-college students. And our incoming class this year was up more than 30%, and includes an increase of transfer students of about 90%. 7% decline for the system, 90% increase. My point here is, how did we do it? By making recruitment a college-wide priority. Students served as hosts on overnight get-visits. Faculty called and met with prospective students. Our admissions team made significant improvements to our recruitment efforts. And administrators partnered with state college colleagues to create new articulation agreements. This is not the work of one office. This is the collective work of this entire college. And we did it without lowering our academic standards. The academic preparation of this year's new class, based on high school GPA and standardized test scores, is up in both transfer and first-time in-college students. In closing, I offer three very quick points. Good work is underway here, and there is much more to do. I implore this board to support what is already working and focus on innovations that address our most significant challenges. Secondly, this campus needs better resources in order to provide the best honors college experience. We need to raise the students' entire experience at New College to the high quality that is being displayed in the classroom. And finally, it is my hope that all trustees never forget this essential fact: students are the focus of New College. They are why we exist. Everything we do here and any changes that we contemplate must be weighed first and foremost on the impact on students. The students who choose to come to New College are nothing less than incredible, and they deserve nothing less than our very best. Thank you.
So, if you liked that, I think you're going to like the student trustee report as well. It's a hard act to follow, Grace, but I know you're up to it.
She's up for it.
Thank you so much, Dr. Oker. So, in case I did not get to introduce myself, I think I met most of you. My name's Grace. I'm the student body president here, and I serve as a trustee. I wanted to first welcome all of our new trustees to campus. You have all brought a lot of energy and media attention, both of which I think is very good. We're incredibly excited to welcome you to our college and to our board. I'm a third-year Classical Studies student here, and I'm very happy that there are a couple of you who've already expressed interest in that studies. I transferred here from a very large and what I would call traditional college, so I think I have a really great perspective on what makes New College so amazing and how we set ourselves apart from other universities. I'm in the unique position where I get to serve as a trustee, but also work closely with the president, her council, staff, and faculty, and then take those faculty classes as a student and live on campus and experience our student life, so I've gotten to know the ins and outs of New College. I wanted to provide you all with some of my thoughts on the college and give you some insights into what the student experience is like here. As I'm sure you have already heard, we have a really unique academic system. From my view, our niche is that we have a stellar, non-traditional education that is all about providing academic freedom to students at an affordable price. I really think this should be the model for higher education, and I think this is why we have been surviving so long. I believe that there is no other university that provides this quality of education at such an affordable price and with so many scholarship opportunities. But as you have seen, our retention has really suffered. Through my experience, I can tell you the biggest reason is our student life. For so long, we have seen time and time again New College not doing well on our metrics, and we try to improve the college by improving our academics: more programs, more money, more faculty. And unfortunately, it doesn't do much, because this is the state we're in today. Our academic system is actually one of the only things that I think we're doing so incredibly right. The issue lies outside of the classroom, and this is what we have heard from students that choose to transfer or drop out. Our facilities are in desperate need of repair. In particular, every year, more and more dorms go offline. In the short time Dr. Oker has been in her position, she has managed to bring in our biggest incoming class in years, which is fantastic. But what that also brought is us reaching our max capacity in our dorms, and Student Affairs is incredibly understaffed. It's a resource problem. We no longer have the staff and facilities to support more students, but we need more students to get those resources. This is the problem we have been facing on the board, and hopefully, our new trustees can help us solve it, and solve it really soon. The new academic year is right around the corner. We don't have the staff or the space to support more students. And as I've said many times in this role, if we are not fulfilling student needs, we are never going to see the performance metrics that we want to see and that we deserve to see. By the time these students graduate, they're so burnt out. It is one thing to be able to handle difficult academics; it is another to handle it with housing and food issues and support staff that are trying to cover two or three jobs. And on student government side of things, I had no money this year for our Student Allocation Committee, which is one of the only sources of funding for clubs or student groups. We worked with finance, and we got some, the commission from vending machines, which you can imagine is not that much. And it's been very difficult to supply students with the resources they need to have a fun social life, because that's important to college: to develop friend groups, to help them through the challenging academics. So it is my recommendation to the board that we figure out a housing and staffing solution, and we figure out very, very quickly, because this is the problem we've seen year over year. I think the one thing we can all agree on is that you can't have a college without space and people to manage those spaces. The other point I wanted to touch on is what I think has brought New College to the place that it is in today. Time and time again, we continue to focus on our academics, as I said, which makes sense, we're in honors college. But with the financial and facilities problems we are facing, changing our academics is not going to fix it. And we know that because we've tried time and time again to do that model. Dr. Oker, our faculty chair, myself, all came into our role semi-recently, and I think the biggest problem we all inherited in our roles was that our campus had become incredibly disconnected. As our resources had dwindled over the years, as more and more staff had to do multiple jobs, as our campus became more siloed, our communication broke. We weren't thinking like a college; we were thinking like a bunch of individual units, only caring about our own needs rather than thinking about the college as a whole. And I really want to commend Dr. Oker, because she came in, and she recognized that problem and did something about it. She has repaired so many relationships on this campus, built trust in her and in the people running the college, and that takes a lot of time and energy, and I thank you for that. She owned up to the fact that our college was not doing well, that she inherited what I might say is a mess. She started the challenge, which I hope we can see a presentation from in one of our future board meetings. And it's all about thinking about the college's future. It gave us hope for the future, which so many of us did not have. I think all of our new trustees came in an exceptional time. We are bringing the college together, and now we just need the resources to bring us forward, and the leadership from the board to find us those resources and make New College so much more than the hidden gem it has always been. I just want to provide everyone with my thoughts on the situation. I'm incredibly grateful that we are getting so much attention from the state, from the media, and I'm very optimistic for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Keenan. I really appreciate your comments. And so, the next item on the agenda are legislative priorities. One of the obligations of this Board of Trustees is to bring resources to this campus. We have three legislative priorities, and I'm going to ask Kristy Fitzpatrick to present those for your consideration.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Kristy Fitzpatrick, Associate Vice President of Government Relations. So I serve in a secondary capacity. My main capacity is lobbyist, internal lobbyist for New College of Florida. So, I want to briefly take a moment to explain our legislative priorities that we've submitted to the Board of Governors, just to get everyone up to speed as to those items that we will be lobbying for in the upcoming legislative session, and I will need your help on these items. So, one of them, and you have a briefing sheet in your packet, it is, the first one is the Hamilton Classroom Building renovation and remodel. It is number one on the Public Capital Outlay Fund list that the Board of Governors provides. They just voted on it last week at the Wednesday meeting, and we still remain as number one on that list. So we are actively going to be seeking those funds, which is a little over 5.8 million, during this legislative session. And that facility is directly outside of this building, for those that aren't familiar, and is in desperate need of funds that will address code issues, ADA compliance, and our main concern with that building is there's no indoor restrooms. So, the next item that we have is number two on this list is the Pritzker Marine Biology Remodel. That is ranked currently number seven on the PICO list, and that would help resolve some structural issues, including ADA, as well as preventing some erosion issues that are happening. And many of you, as you've toured with me over the last couple of days, you've seen some of the issues that we're facing with that facility. The last one that we have is the University of Distinction. It's a funding ask for educating our 21st-century workforce, and that would be 1.24 million in respect to building our career preparation program further and adding new internship scholarships, work-based learning pathways to careers, and learning through digital and virtual reality. So I look forward to working with you all this next session, which begins in March, on these items and quite a few others, that we have a lot of work to do, as Grace mentioned and has mentioned by others. So, look forward to working with you.
Any questions for Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I might, thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. I just wanted to mention to my fellow trustees here, we, over the past few years, have kind of struggled with legislative funding in comparison to our peers in the state university system. And I would challenge us as a board, now that we arguably have the ear of the legislature and our executive branch, to think more than adding bathrooms where there's no bathrooms or fixing a corrosive area. Let's think boldly about what the state can do to support us. That's information technology, that's facilities and infrastructure. If we all were to just look over the past five years at the student centers that we're invested in at the other state university systems, I think it will help us be more competitive. So, I for one, am looking forward to Kristy working with you and thinking bold as an organization and seeing how the state could put some wind behind our sails here.
Kristy, can you tell me, again, I didn't catch the numbers, and priority, I think Hamilton was number one, Pritzker was seven, is that right?
Seven on the PICO list. That's correct, at 5.7 million currently.
The PICO list is all of the asks in the state university system ranked by priority according to Board of Governors' standards. So, the fact that we're number one and number seven is really significant.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, I think it's the list of capital expenditures, not all expenditures of the universities, it's capital projects.
So the University of Distinction is not on that list? It's separate?
That's a separate item.
It's not capital. Other questions?
We should also note that the governor himself, this morning at an event, pledged to work with the legislature to provide $15 million to New College. That's significant, and I think as we go through some of these major changes, we should keep very much in mind that the governor and his mission, his mandate, the legislators who were there in attendance even this morning at its event, they're not going to set us up for failure. And if we can meet expectations, I think that 15 million is just a starting point, and I pledge, and I know my colleagues would also pledge, to work as hard as we can to get a transformative investment in New College, rather than just, you know, plug the holes.
Thank you. Other comments, trustee Keenan?
Thank you. I was going to ask, do we have a current list of, not things we've already sent to the state, but our list of projects that we have lined up?
We have that list that I can provide, and we can do a future presentation on.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
But we're going to, we'll need to work on some strategy with that, I think.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, I would commend you to talk with, and I'm sure you've already begun to talk with all of the trustees individually and get ideas, because again, I think we're in an era of thinking bigger than we have been able to think in the past.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent comments. So next on the agenda is a report from the Finance and Administration Committee. And our chair is Ron Cristaldi for that committee.
Thank you, madam chair. To our new board members, I exercised some chair prerogative and took this one myself off the consent agenda, because it does deal with budget issues, and I just suspected, without having spoken with any of our new members when we had our committee meeting about a week ago, that it was something that our new members were going to want to digest a little bit. So, Mr. Kinsley is here to talk a little bit about it, but again, we specifically moved this out of the consent agenda into discussion, so it could be a more informative discussion, and we can make some decisions on it individually.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Vice Chair Cristaldi. And I'm joined today by our Chief Human Resource Officer, Erica Worthy. I'm going to just hit some highlights. The committee went into great depth of detail. We can certainly take questions. Erica will cover some of the, like I said, some of the details. This is one of our three union contracts. This just happens to be the first up. We finished negotiations with the New College United Faculty of Florida Union, and that consists of positions such as professor, instructor, librarian, counselor, advisor, program directors. Most of the educational, professional positions that are not part of the management team are included in what's called the N-CUF. We have two other unions. We have the Police Union, the PBA, Police Benevolent Association, and we have the ASME, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, which covers much of the remainder of our workforce. But this union, the N-CUF, is the largest with about 100 employees. Everyone else is considered out of unit, basically at-will employees. We don't work, we have no contracts, we're at-will employees, we serve at the pleasure of the college. And that would include me and my colleague Erica, so we hope we are, we're serving at your pleasure today. I will just say, from a financial standpoint, we analyze all the unions as we look to negotiate to ensure that we have the cash available to meet the proposal that's put before you today. That includes both this fiscal year and using conservative assumptions of where the state will fund us next year and where our tuition enrollment will be for '23-'24. So we do both a current year and an annualized look for every contract. This just happens to be the first one. We hope to conclude negotiations with the other two units, and I commend Erica. This is her first year at the college, and she's jumped in and led the negotiation team, and she's done a great job. So with that, Erica, I'm going to turn it to you to give some of the highlights of the negotiated contract. I will note, the faculty approved it, I think it was 66 to 2, if I have the numbers right. So, it has been ratified by the union to move forward. It needs your ratification today.
Thank you, Chris. Hello, everyone. Thanks for listening today. As Chris mentioned, we have a tentative agreement between New College of Florida and the United Faculty of Florida for changes. Faculty of Florida for changes made to the collective bargaining agreement for the 2021-2024 agreement. Although there are five articles that are presented before you today, I'm going to spend my time just focusing on Article 23, which is the salaries. That's the most important for everyone. In determining salaries, we took into consideration economic wage trends and internal budget constraints. 61%, 61% of New College faculty are below the national median salary. And this is outlined in the Coupa HR Faculty Market Data.
Can you give me that number again?
61%.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. In addition, the CPI is up 6.5% from this time last year in all major categories, including food, which is up 10.5%. Looking more locally in Florida, as Chair Mary Ruiz mentioned, our faculty is paid in the lower quartile as compared to other SUS schools. We're the lowest. So, outlined in the board action that you have with you, our increases today range from 3.25% to 3.5% and capped at $1,500 for faculty over $100,000. If annualized with taxes and benefits, the all-in cost is approximately $289,510. There is a one-time corrective payment for nine-month faculty tied to a fiscal year 2021, which is $1,809,729. And to better support our students, faculty have agreed to start the academic year one week early, which has an all-in cost of $231,875,000. These salary increases, if changed and approved today, would go into effect February 5, 2023. So, this concludes our presentation, and Chris and I are both open for questions.
And I know, I know you've said you're going to focus on the salary, but could you just mention the other areas? I think it's important to orient folks to everything that would be changed pursuant to the amendment.
Blending it up.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, sorry.
It takes a while to download 149 pages.
It does. It's coming. Hold on.
And I think they're reflected in the agenda.
While you're looking through that, I should also say to the board, so we all know, I received a call from Alex Zumas, who is the Chief Compliance Officer for the university. He's been doing compliance work for 40 years, and he told me and provided me his analysis that says, "The one-time faculty payment, as written in this contract, is in violation of Florida statute, should we approve it." And he said, you know, "If you pass this, you will be violating the law," and actually the university has already violated the law, in his view, with the previous 12-month faculty payment. And so, I would think that, as a first action of the board, we should maybe not violate the Florida statute, and I would recommend that we get an independent counsel to review this item before we make any choice.
I think that's an excellent recommendation, and we in fact have done so, and so I'll ask Mr. Smoker to summarize his review and the review of outside counsel.
First of all, Dave Smoker, for the record. This particular item was presented to me for review by our outside counsel, who had participated in the negotiations with the university faculty bargaining unit. And apparently what happens is that because of the odd calendar years, different days, every 11 years, it apparently has become customary, not only at New College, but I think throughout the state system, where people get an extra bi-weekly pay. And in this particular instance...
Because there's an extra pay period in that calendar year.
Correct.
So, it's a, makes sense?
So...
It's like leap day, leap, you know, leap year.
Yeah. So, in this particular instance, what happens is with the faculty, they can elect to receive their salary either over a nine-month period, prorated, or they can elect to have it spread through the entire year. What ended up happening was that the faculty who had elected to spread their salary through 12 months of the year, along with all the rest of the employees, received what amounted to a 27th pay. The faculty who elected to receive their salary over a nine-month period didn't get that. So, the question, it was negotiated, and I will tell you that it's a tricky situation. I mean, sometimes you're faced with situations where you've got to kind of look at the law side, and, you know, as a lawyer, there's another side, which is called the equity side. And equity is supposed to fill the void where the law doesn't really necessarily get you the right result. So, I looked at that situation, and my conclusion was, on the one hand, we could make it right by the faculty who spread their payment over nine months, which would then put them on the same par as all of the rest of the faculty and all the rest of the employees who had their payments over 26, 27 pay periods. Or, we could say no, with the implication being then, all of the rest of the people that got the 27th pay period, what do you do then? Do you unwind all that, which is, would be the implication that you would have to do? Now, if they've already been paid, they've already paid their income tax, they've already paid their withholdings, their Medicare, their, all of that, do you then come back and undo all that? So, I looked at it from the standpoint of a judge. I mean, you know, I've been in front of a lot of judges over the years, and I said, "What would a judge do?" And I came to the conclusion that a judge would do what the bargaining unit and the public employer have negotiated, which is to make it essentially equalize it for all of the New College employees.
So, Mr. Zumas presented his concerns to me, and in response, I asked for outside counsel, an employment expert, to review it. We have a written opinion that does not agree with Mr. Zumas, so his concern was taken very seriously.
Sure.
We've had multiple now reviews of two different attorneys, and the conclusion is, by both attorneys, that it's proper. So, I appreciate you bringing it up, and I want you to know that we take concerns like this very seriously, and we've had it reviewed.
You told me that, and he also said, hey, he still strenuously insists that this is illegal, and so I think it might be...
He's not an attorney.
Yeah. He's not an attorney. Been working in compliance for 40 years, and our own attorney here is saying that, according to the law, maybe not so much, but according to equity, you know, let's do it. And I think that's, I don't think that's a good standard. I think we should be as strict in compliance with the law.
We do have another, we do have another opinion outside of counsel.
So, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Smoker, about being a judge and what a judge would do. I consider us a judge, each individual judges here.
Wow.
We've got decisions to make, and we've got to weigh things, and I think what a judge would do is say, "I need time to look at this," and so that's what I would recommend, time to look at this.
So, any other questions for staff, or any other comments?
So, what is the timeline on this? Is this, we need to make a decision in this meeting?
So, we have already had this ratified and agreed upon by the UFF to have this going to affect February 5. If it does not go through today, and we come back in March, we will need to do retroactive payments because it's been ratified. This is already something that, from a national labor relations law perspective, it's gone, and that's a federal law, it's already gone through the process, and, you know, that's where we...
Presti Lipinski, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just, if I could get another clarification on, so, what is the ramifications for the college if we were to delay to our next meeting? You said that there would have to be retroactive payment because the cost of living increase is effective February...
5.
5.
5.
So, I mean, is the college capable of making that work? I mean, is this something that we should be concerned about?
If, if, if we will make it work in human resources, if that's what we would prefer to do, to have more time to take a look at it, I can say that through this entire process, we had an employment attorney at the table, an outside employment attorney through the entire process, who was there with us, helping us make these decisions. So, I mean, if you want to take a look at it, but there is, there was an expert already involved who actually was able to guide us in a way to where it was ensured that we are within the bounds of the law.
So, I would like to make a comment. I am very sympathetic with the volume of work that each of you are undertaking as trustees, and the packet is 149 pages, and you're new. But we do try to get that packet out at least a week in advance. We do have committees review it, so that several trustees have an in-depth understanding of these matters. And so, I would ask trustees in the future to read the packet, to call, to call, no, I don't mean any disrespect, to read the packet, to identify questions that you have. You are free to call any staff person to get the information you need, to feel informed, to raise questions, to get the data that you need, and then we can come to this meeting and make decisions. We have a heavy lift of decisions that we have to make through the normal course of business. This is actually a light agenda compared to what we have to do, and there are aspirations to add to this agenda and to do even more. And so, we're not going to make it if we don't come prepared to the meetings with our questions answered. So, again, if there's something that we can do to make it easier for you, because this is a big lift, we are all volunteers, it is a big ask, these are complex matters, you're learning, you know, you're on the fast curve, and so, we will support you in any way that we can, because it is a big ask, and I appreciate your commitment to fulfilling those responsibilities.
Madam Chair.
My name's been mentioned several times.
Alex, you're out of order. Please sit down. I would like to hear from the trustees.
Madam Chair, I had a request of Ms. Worthy. I think she was pulling up some information just to orient the trustees of the other items that would be accomplished by the collective bargaining agreement. We got a bit sidetracked.
Yes, thank you, Ron. In addition to the salaries, we will be adding three federal holidays to the, be able to acknowledge this year. Also, we will be providing bereavement leave to employees, five days, up from three days. In addition, we will be opening up negotiations early this year. It's been mid-year, I believe it's been, October or something, we've started, and always had to do a retroactive payment to July, and we're going to start this a little early, hopefully April, to be able to have contracts negotiated before July 1, so that we can run in parallel with the fiscal year, so that we'll know exactly what salaries need to be paid upfront.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Before, yeah. Before voting on this, it sounds like the person that Trustee Ruffo mentioned has concerns about this is here today. Could we hear from him? And then during the public commenting period, it sounds like a former trustee is here who encouraged us to vote no on this. Could we hear from him as well? It just strikes me that I would make a much better informed decision if I could hear from both sides of this disagreement, because it sounds like, on the prepared agenda, all I've heard from is one side of the disagreement. But it sounds like there are people in the room.
I think...
It sounds like there are people in the room who represent the alternative viewpoint.
I think that what we also need is the attorney, who, the outside counsel, who made this decision. So, we're, we don't have all views present right now.
Right, so I'm saying, it strikes me then, if we don't have all views present, how can we as trustees make an informed vote?
So, in the packet, in the packet, there is a letter from the attorney outlining her recommendation. I'm not sure...
I don't think so.
Tell them to trustee.
Okay, all right.
I think the only responsible decision is to defer at this point.
If we can ask them questions, it sounds like they're...
I don't see how we can decide on this without even both sides.
Well, I, could I ask trustee to finish, and then we'll acknowledge trustee Ruffo.
I'm just saying, it would be helpful if we could ask everyone here who is present, who has relevant information for us, but it sounds like we've only been presented to ask questions of one side of a disagreement, and so it's hard for me to have this meeting be useful if I can't ask questions of both sides of the disagreement.
Thank you, and trustee Ruffo.
Mr. Zumas, the Chief Compliance Officer, has had a long career working on this. He's here. Can we hear from him, his point of view? And if not, why not?
I would be more comfortable if we were going to present more information, to have the outside counsel present also, so you can ask questions from both.
In that case, I am not prepared to support this agreement.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce a motion to defer this item to the next meeting.
I second that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second to defer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. So, the item is deferred.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, and could we, could we see the outside counsel letter in the next packet, please?
Yes, and we'll invite them to...
And as well, perhaps we could have Mr. Zumas provide us with his opinion in a memorandum? Thank you.
Madam Chair, the only thing I would ask is some counsel to give thought to what is and what is an attorney-client privilege, and distribute that information in a way that preserves privilege. Everybody on this group has a right to see it, and I'm not disputing that at all. I just want to be cautious that we all, we all act in a way that preserves attorney-client privilege as necessary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Which attorney-client privilege are you referring to?
Sure, we have an opinion from an outside counsel to this board, and I don't know whether it's a privileged opinion or not, but I don't want to inadvertently waive any privilege that we might have.
That's prudent, makes sense, yep.
So, the next item on the agenda, we have a presentation from trustee Ruffo.
Great, thank you.
And he promises me he'll be brief.
I will, and I think that, you know, I appreciate some of the sentiments that have been shared, but I think we're really refusing to deal with the simple reality. This is a college in crisis. On the Board of Governors' metrics, it ranks dead last, including on a number of important concerns. The legislature said that we were to increase enrollment from 800 to 1,200 by this year, or risk serious repercussions, and it's gone from 800 to 700, so totally the wrong direction. You have a first-year dropout rate of 21%. You have a yield rate at this college of roughly 13% or 14%.
So, are we addressing the Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence?
And I'm going to get there. This is context, and so, we need to take very seriously the situation that we're in, not avoid it. And I think that one of the items that we discussed, that I discussed today with Governor DeSantis and with legislators present, is that diversity, equity, and inclusion, which sounds great, but in practice divides people and offers separate judgments on the basis of race and identity.
My opinion don't matter.
My opinion does matter, actually, unfortunately for you.
Could I ask, could I ask the audience to please offer trustee Ruffo the respect of getting his comments out? We've assured him that we are open to all ideas, and I think we need to demonstrate that right now.
And I think, therefore, it is not a good use of funds, and in the interest of really achieving the mandate that we've been set out to achieve, as many of our new board members, the mandate and the vision that the Governor laid out this morning alongside the state legislators, I think the first action that we have to take is very clear. We need to demonstrate to the legislature, which controls the purse strings for this university, that we want to meet their expectations, meet their vision, enact their mandate. And I've put into the agenda a model policy from Manhattan Institute titled "Abolish DEI bureaucracy and Restore Colorblind Equality in Public Universities." This is also in line with the founding mission of the college, and I'll quote, the founders of the college said clearly, quote, "The Christian college shall be open to all students qualified for its academic programs. Race, creed, national origin, or cultural status shall never be considered as a basis for denial of admission." And so, they adapted a simple system of colorblind equality and diversity, equity, and inclusion. The whole meaning of the word equity is to actually create separate standards for people based on their identity categories. This goes against the founding mission of the college, it goes against the will of Florida voters, and against the stated vision of the Governor and the legislators, and so, therefore, I would, I would move to, I would move to adopt the policies laid out in this, in this model policy statement, and very specifically, I would encourage the, or I would rather require the administration to adopt the model policy, and then specifically to abolish the Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence, terminate the employment of the four employees in the organizational chart, ban the current or future years of diversity statements, prohibit mandatory diversity training, and prohibit identity-based preferences. And I think that my colleagues have read the, read the model policy, and I move to adopt it.
I second the motion.
Oh, I have a...
Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
I have some...
So, I would like to give a little context... So, I would like to give a little context concerning these matters. Right now, the governor is working with the Board of Governors on this issue. There are policies being developed. We are part of a state university system, and the reason that we've risen to number one in the country five years, maybe six years in a row now, is that we act as a system. And so, we try not to get ahead of that policy development at the state level. So, there are, there's data that the governor has requested and has been submitted, I don't think it's been synthesized yet. There are policies being developed and written. There are regulations that likely will have to be changed, and so, this is the context in which we make these kinds of policy decisions. And then, at our level, a motion like this would best be in writing, so again, that we would all know what it says and...
We have a model policy in writing that could be easily adapted.
And so, that's, that's another issue. I'm trying to unpack all the levels here. And then, the third level is a transition plan, where we actually look at what this office does, whether, what is really irrelevant to the policy we're trying to develop, because as a small college, people have five and six jobs, they are doing a bunch of things, there are contracts and grants and other things.
Sure.
That, so, so in order for me to feel comfortable as a trustee to make a transition, I would need to see where we are, where we want to be, and where we're going. And so, there's a little bit of work to be done at the state level for us to understand where the governor and the Board of Governors are going.
I think the governor's really clear in his remarks this morning, I also shared them with him. I don't see the, and rather than saying, oh, we should follow the state, I think it's time for us to lead. I think it's time for us to set a new standard, and anticipating that this may well be the standard everywhere.
I think that's certainly possible if you work through the Board of Governors. So, I just, you know, I offer this by way of context, because, and I think I warned several of you when I greeted you, that we have a lot of accountability points as a Board of Trustees. There are statutes, there are regulations, there's the system that the governor has set up through the Board of Governors, and so, we have, we have to understand the impacts at all these levels and get information from those sources. And so, it is...
We have a motion and a second, are we going to take a vote?
We are, after I finish my remarks, which I have just done. So, are there any other remarks?
I have some questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I was going to ask, because as, I would also say what you're saying is that this doesn't necessarily apply directly to new college, so I'd like a little bit more information on if we were to just adopt this, what would that look like for the school? Because we don't, we currently don't have mandated diversity training, so that's, we wouldn't be doing that. And so, if we want to look at the Office of Excellence and Inclusion, they do multiple other things beyond DEI work, and so, we would want to make sure, I think outreach is very important, especially when we're trying to increase our admissions and enrollment numbers. So, that's something I think we would want to keep. I think they provide a lot of professional training, is what I believe some of the things that they do, and so, it might be better if we get some more information about that office and all the duties that they, and the responsibilities that they have, so we can kind of look at what might fall under, like, the, the presentation that you've brought to us, and what are things that we might want to keep. But I think, I definitely hear where you're coming from, but I think we need a little bit more logistics of how exactly will this be implemented at new college specifically, if that makes sense. So, I would definitely ask for more information.
Trustee Baraline?
Yeah, my, my microphone is off, but I can, I can try to project.
It's on, it's on.
Let me just say, and release this to everyone in the room, you must understand that for many, many people in Florida in this country, DEI is experienced as coercive and oppressive. You can disagree with that, but you have to acknowledge many people experience it as that. And this is a, this is a public university.
Please, please, please offer some respect for our speaker.
Now, a concrete example of a practice is requiring of faculty DEI statements. This is a McCarthyite litmus test. It inserts ideological content, these are loaded terms, these are not neutral, objective terms. They have embedded ideological content in them. And to require that of people who teach computer science, whatever, is to add a non-academic, non-research-oriented criterion to their work, to ask that their research do these things, is a form of coercion. Peer review cannot survive if an equity criterion is included in it. Now, broadly speaking, I think that, again, the broad idea of diversity, equity, inclusion, I think generally we all support that, but in the academic practice, hiring, promotion, tenuring, setting up admissions criteria, you must try to keep those, those elements out. And so, I mean, I'm happy to debate, I'm happy to talk with you about the peer review process, happy to talk about the way in which equity can come in, and it just, it just skews things, it starts to poison the process. I've seen this many, many times in a long 35-year academic career here, in hiring committees, I've been behind the closed doors, I've done peer review of manuscripts for presses, and I've judged people for promotion and tenure, all right? This is, this is, the operations of the university are a very fragile thing, and one must, one must set up, set up the guidelines carefully. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. So, we have a very long motion before us. We do not have answers to all the questions that trustees are asking in terms of what's going on now, what are we talking about, what the future will be. We don't have guidance from the Board of Governors, so I just caution trustees to keep this in mind. Trustee Ruffo, will you repeat the motion, please?
Before we do, just more, more comment. I'd like to, I'd like to know, just from the experienced trustees here, what happens if the Board of Governors disagrees with? What's the worst thing that could happen? They just correct it and ask us to amend things?
I think it's not a member of disagreement, I think all of these universities, general councils, presidents, all the staff are working together, because the governor's made it clear, he wants to hold this policy up to the light, and he is looking for new direction that is clear, and so...
I agree with that, and I think trustee Ruffo is correct, and that this is our opportunity to lead.
Thank you. So, trustee Ruffo, will you, any other comments before?
I think trustee Spalding had some...
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I have... All right. Who wants to speak? Raise your hand. All right, so we're going to go around the table in order. Go ahead.
I agree with trustee Baraline's comments about the divisiveness of these activities, and I think the particular problem here is that these activities are not occurring in the day-to-day academic debate, but are actually coming in through the administration of things. Having said that, I think the current motion fail, it doesn't sufficiently clarify the details. That said, I would propose we amend the motion to state that it is the intent of the Board of Trustees to abolish such practices that are in violation of the mission of the college, and at our, and at our next meeting, we'll take this up in detail. But we vote now that that is our intent to proceed, as opposed to passing a policy in toto that is unclear in any way.
So, are you accepting the amendment?
I accept it.
And who seconded it?
I think trustee Spear may have seconded it, but I'm not sure.
No, I didn't, I did not.
Did we have a second to that? I thought we had a second to that motion.
I seconded trustee Ruffo's original motion.
Right, and so, and so, we're asking whether you accept the amendment, as the person who seconded the motion.
Is that only to me to second that?
Yeah, because you were the second, so you can accept it or decline.
I accept that.
All right. So, we have the amended motion. Trustee Ruffo, would you read it, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry, there are more comments.
I'm sorry. And I'll admit that I probably, in this room, have the least knowledge on these issues, so I've, I've solid on the agenda, and I've been admittedly watching podcasts and reading things and trying to get up to speed. Trustee Ruffo, forgive me, in the, in the materials, can you point to what, what was the page, or, and I'm not asking you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just want to know exactly what the model, because I may have missed it, but I saw model legislative text, but I didn't see a model university policy, and, and I just want to be able to digest that.
That's right, yeah, and that's why I was saying, adapting the model policy, this is, of course, legislative text, it would have to be adapted by, by counsel, by the administration, and so, the spirit of it, the principles of it, the kind of core concepts are for, it is abolishing DEI departments, banning the use of politically coercive diversity statements, prohibiting mandatory training on race, gender, diversity, et cetera, and then prohibiting identity-based preferences in university decision-making.
And so, the, and so, the motion would be to direct staff to draft a policy...
Based on the, on the model, yes, on those four points.
Based on those principles, and also consistent with, I'm presuming, consistent with Florida law, because, you know, there are some statutes and regulations.
Of course, consistent with Florida law, and if there are any...
All law.
All law, in general.
And I don't mean that sarcastically, I just...
And if there are any statutory requirements in that department, to transfer them to the general counsel's office.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other comments?
When we do talk about it again, I'd like to know what our policy is now, so if we can all get that information before the next meeting, I'd like to know that.
Good point.
A couple of points, just a clarification of how we do things, I could say a lot more about all this, but I think these are important. So, the office currently in the college is the Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence, and as I talked in my comments, the, the part of outreach is intimately connected with our academic model, the community-based learning, and so, I would urge the board to think about distinguishing DEI work from the outreach part. Another part that is currently happening, and work that is currently happening in the, in that office is financial literacy for our students, and again, like, to really have questions about what we're including and whatnot. We are required by the Board of Governors to submit an equity report to the Board of Governors, and that's currently done through that office, and it, obviously, it could be somewhere else, but I'd like to work, I'd recommend that we work out that details. And the last thing, this is just as an update from the conversations that the S U S presidents have been having about this subject, so there's been a lot of working of just informal conversations of how we separate out different parts. So, this is not true in our, on our campus, but I'll mention it for other campuses, is for veterans' centers and support for veterans is sometimes in offices of DEI. And we, there was some discussion of, is it the intent to, to take away our support of veterans? I personally would love to see New College increase its support of veterans on our campus. And, but my point is simply that I urge this board, as you're, as considering these, is to really think about what parts go where and what is in DEI, because the chair of the rest is absolutely right, many of our offices have, in other places, would be two or three different offices, so it's outreach and inclusive excellence, and I do think it's important to separate out and then be clear about which parts you want to continue and which parts you have concerns about.
Other comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would say, I'm in broad support of the amended motion, but I must say, as far as the names go, outreach and inclusive excellence is a pretty good name. I mean, it's, I mean, it mentions outreach rather than coercion, or quotas, or any of that kind of thing, and it mentions, it ties to inclusiveness, the notion of excellence. And I think that is a very important principle for this college in particular, but for all liberal arts colleges, all universities. So, the name is unusually good, I think, as far as the names of these kinds of offices go. Having said that, I think the, the spirit of trustee Ruffo's proposal is in the two words he used, that, that we adopt it and we adapt it.
Yes.
He's used both terms in expressing what's to be done. And I take, I take it that the, the focus of trustee Spalding's amendment is in the direction of, let's, let us, let us have a report prepared for the next board meeting of how the administration would propose to adapt...
Yes.
...this to the conditions, which are unique of, of a new college of Florida. And in that adaptation, they can make the argument for the differentiation of functions, outreach, veterans, various other things that the, the president has eloquently addressed. But we would also have a plan to review and, and to criticize, to evaluate, and so forth. And that would, that would get us, I think, to the next stage of the debate, which is, okay, what, how could we adapt these general principles to the specific circumstances of the college, moving in the direction of adopting and adapting them at the same time.
Well said.
Other comments? Thank you.
I have another question. So, the second vote is to adopt the spirit of the four main, like, tenants offered in this? Is that it?
Trustee Spalding has the... You're saying the amendment?
Yes.
Well, I, I think, following trustee Kessler's good point, to do this correctly, we need to be able to parse precisely what President Oker has, has brought up. The concern would be to, not doing it that way might make mistakes. But I think we should signal now what our intent is, and then collect the information we need to make a decision. So, I would, so I suggest by my amendment that we vote that our intent is to go in the direction suggested by trustee Ruffo, but then ask, I think, ask for this to come up at the next meeting, presented in the way suggested here, so we can actually make that final decision.
But if I can just get clarification on the amendment, even though I was the one that seconded it, I still want to understand this a little bit better. It sounds to me, based on Kessler, is that right, trustee Kessler? Kessler's description that adapting is intent and thereby making the amendment not necessary.
No, no, the distinction here is rather than outright abolition immediately right now, which might make the kind of mistakes that are legitimately raised, we should signal that our intent, the direction the board is giving, is to move in that direction, but then have it presented in a way so we can make sure we're not making those mistakes at the next board meeting. So, it's, so intent is not the same as the original motion.
So, can I clarify? So, is the intent to, and sorry to be specific about these things, so the intent is to, in future meetings, have discussions and vote on these matters? Or is the...
I think, I think the intent we have that is to move down the path of abolishing the policies that are in, clearly in violation, as has been pointed off by many people, of not only the principles, the, the mission of the college, but as Chris, as trustee Ruffo said, that themselves are discriminatory. And I think we should signal that that's where we want to go, so that when the report is prepared, it will parse these things correctly, because we can see what are the things we want to not abolish and not damage or strengthen, and the things that we have actually voiced our opposition to.
Madam Chair, if I might, I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth, but it sounds like what we're doing, if I'm understanding correctly, is we're directing staff to prepare a policy based on principles for us to consider, and it'll be considered based on what's existing and what's proposed as new. Grace, is that, and I, we've, we probably ought to restate that as a motion, just to make sure the record's clear, but I think, if I understand correctly, the motion is to direct staff to draft a policy based on the principles that were in the document in our agenda for consider, for future consideration at the board at our next meeting, and I think the direction was also to have staff or counsel advise us on what is in place and what will be replaced, and what the implications of that are.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yes. I find that much clearer.
Right, let's do that.
In agreement.
So are you going to withdraw your motion?
I'd like to withdraw my motion and, and introduce a motion exactly, exactly of his words, exactly what he said.
Okay, so before we move, I want to hear from general counsel about the regulatory environment in which we're doing this, so if you could just advise us generally about that.
Yeah, very generally, just so that everyone has a clear understanding, the Board of Governors is constitutionally empowered to regulate how we operate, and they have adopted a rule, which is Rule 2.003, dealing with equity and access, and I think it's going to overlap into a lot of the issues that are of concern to you, Trustee Ruffo, and to you, Trustee Kessler. I would strongly recommend that you look at those in order to try to understand what is the regulatory environment that we all, all are already subject to as it relates to those matters.
Sure.
Now, I understand that it's definitely an issue that's being discussed by the Board of Governors, but we currently have a regulatory system in place that addresses these kinds of issues. Now, we also have two new college regulations that also overlap this, so there is a pre-existing regulatory scheme that needs to be taken into consideration as part of this.
Those would be good items to include in this report.
Yeah, I would strongly...
By necessity.
By necessity, I think that's, that's fun, yeah, that'd be helpful.
Definitely recommend you consider that.
So, Trustee Cristaldi, could you repeat your suggestion?
Trustee Cristaldi is the Cicero here, he's very well spoken.
And we're gonna, we're gonna maybe add conforming or addressing the regulatory environment or something, something weirdly, I'm sure you can come up with something.
I feel like I'm speaking for Mr. Ruffo there, because it's not my motion, but I, if I understood the motion correctly, it was a motion to direct staff to prepare a draft policy based on the principles outlined in the materials in our packet, and to present that draft policy along with the existing policy and a description of changes and legal and regulatory implications at our next meeting. Trustee Ruffo, you're welcome to reword with that.
Perfect, we're there, yeah.
Spoken by a New College alum.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion.
Trustee, Trustee Ruffo, are you making that motion?
Yes.
As stated, and, and do I have a second?
Second.
And we, we probably parliamentary-wise need to do something with the motion that's already first and seconded, right?
Can I withdraw?
You withdrew it, you withdrew it.
I withdraw the previous motion.
We're good, all right. Okay, so the second, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, Spalding, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, the motion carries.
Just a question for counsel, are there, or do you know, are there accreditation implications as well?
Could well be.
And what, what, I would like to know what the accrediting agency's policy is, if there is one, on, on DEI and outreach and excellence more generally.
That's an excellent point, and we, we do have regulations requiring that if we're going to change anything in a material way with the accrediting agency, we have to inform them of what we're doing.
Okay, yes, it would be useful to have a review of that, I think, for us.
So Trustee Spear has mentioned this several times, so I want to move up on the agenda, the, the committee assignments. We have, in our own regulation, a number of committees, you've been given the list and the descriptions. This is where the real work gets done, because the committees raise these kinds of questions so that you have the answers, hopefully, by the time it comes to the full board. We typically ask trustees to serve on at least two committees, if you're a glutton for punishment, you can serve on more. We need at least three trustees for each committee, and usually not more than five, because it just gets, pretty soon the whole board's meeting on every committee if, if they get too large. And so I would ask you to consider which committees you'd like to serve on, and let Ms. Fitzpatrick know what your druthers are, and then we can try to present a list of committees based on your preferences for approval of the board. I, I encourage us to get moving on this, because it's very hard to get work done if we don't, if we don't have a way to process the work. It's where a lot of this discussion can come out, and, and the board is well served by it. So take a look at that, let Christie know, can I ask you to do that within a week? Just let, just email her what your preferences are in terms of your committee service, and then she can compile the druthers, and, and we can get organized for that. So I appreciate everybody doing that.
Madam Chair, if I might just add, for the new trustees, all the committee meetings are open to the public, so any trustee is welcome to attend those by being on the committee, though you get a vote on what the committee does. Are those Zoom-able?
They're, they're almost always Zoom, and that's the good news.
And the bad news.
And the bad news. So now we're on to other business. The first one on the list in other business is President Oker's employment agreement. When we hired President Oker, we spent about three to six months compiling the leadership challenges that we wanted our next president to address. They were carefully considered, and the recruitment was based on those leadership challenges. I think it's safe to say that the landscape has dramatically changed, the leadership challenges are different, and I want to have a discussion about President Oker's employment agreement in light of those leadership changes. Challenges, excuse me.
I'd welcome President Oker to give her thoughts first.
That was not how I thought this was going to go. I understand that my job as president is to carry out the policies and plans of this board. I understand that there is a new mandate for this college, and I have been informed that the plan includes the termination of my employment as president. That is my understanding.
What I would say is, I think it's very generous of Dr. Oker to, when we have all of this new leadership coming in, to understand that there might be some considerations of whether you are the right person for the job, but in your very short time that you have been here, I think you have shown to be an incredible leader, and, and that you are the exact person we need to institute all of these changes. And so since we are wanting to do some dramatic changes at New College, which I think is fantastic and long overdue, long before you came here, Dr. Oker, and part of that is having well-established relationships with the people who work here and the students who come here, and having trust in their leadership to make sure that they will stay true to the mission and that they will do New College justice, and I think you have done nothing but prove all of these things true. And so, I think you've, you've done an incredible job and have been incredibly open to change, and I think we're all very open to change, because I think it's been a long time that we've really wanted a very active Board of Trustees to compensate for the things that you can't compensate for, for these big decisions and this, these, trying to find resources for multimillion-dollar projects, that's really the board's job. And so I think you have done an amazing job in the capacity that you have as president and even beyond that. And so I think you are an incredible person to lead us through these changes, and I, I hope you stay.
Given that we actually don't have any information in our packets about your agreement, employment agreement, perhaps you could clarify more, the, the status of, of that agreement going forward, to the, to the extent that we might know about that?
You want to take that? You want to have it?
Yes.
Trustee Kessler, are you wanting to know about her existing...
Trustee Kessler is to your left, left.
Spalding.
Yes.
We're all getting to know each other.
Like the baseball, or the basketball.
President Oker's current employment agreement makes provision for termination with or without cause, and the terms and conditions of that are such that it's spelled out fairly clearly in her employment agreement. I'm happy to just let you know what they are. You can terminate with or without cause, and Dr. Oker is also able to terminate without cause and for breach. In the event of termination, the college may terminate without cause after first giving not less than 120-day calendar day written notice to Dr. Oker of intention to terminate. And it requires a two-thirds vote of the board as a whole, so that would mean you would have to have two-thirds of 13. Dr. Oker is allowed to resign without breach. She has to give you 90 days' notice if she intends to do that. And the, the college can terminate for cause. In the, but the cause has to be, you know, evidence of a deliberate, actual violation of the duties set forth in the agreement. It has to be conduct constituting moral perpetuity that would bring public disgrace, disrespect, and contempt or ridicule upon the college, or it has to be a violation of state of Florida law, rule, regulation, or constitutional provision, or...
I don't think anybody is thinking that this is for cause.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm just laying it out. And then Dr. Oker has the ability to terminate for cause. If there is a breach that she alleges, there's 30 days to cure. If it's cured, then, then she, if it's not cured, then she has the right to terminate the agreement upon written notice of termination. Now, on the effect of termination, it varies. In the event that there is a termination for the college for cause, the college is not obligated to pay any further salary severance or benefits, nor will there be a right to assume any kind of teaching position at the college. Her current employment agreement allows, it provides for a five-year term, and at the end of that term, she is able to become a full-time tenured faculty member in the English Department, I believe. And so in the event that she's terminated for cause, no obligation to continue to pay, no right to assume a faculty position. If it's other than for cause, then, if the college terminates the agreement without cause, then Dr. Oker is entitled to 20 weeks of severance or the maximum permitted under Florida law at the time to be paid at her annual base salary in effect at the time of termination. In the event of termination without cause by the college, doctor, or termination for cause by Dr. Oker, then she, or if she resigns the presidency, then without breach of the agreement, then she has the right to assume full-time faculty position. So that's basically what her agreement calls for.
So could you also go over the amendment that is in the packet? Should there be a termination of Dr. Oker's employment?
Has everyone seen the amendment?
It's, it was, it was delivered to you.
In the packet?
Yesterday, by email.
Could somebody just recap it for me?
Yes, I'd be happy to. What the, the, it, this would be an amendment to her employment agreement, is how we're, we're treating it, and it would say...
And this is for termination by the college without cause?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it would say, effective January 31st, 2023, today, her employment would be terminated subject to the terms and conditions of the amended agreement, and she would be relieved of all duties. And the terms are fairly straightforward. Effective February 1, 2023, she will commence a one-year, 12-month professional development leave, which is also provided for in her existing employment agreement, compensated her current base salary and current benefits, including medical, dental, I mean, medical retirement, et cetera. And then, payment shall be made in equal installments in accordance with the college's customary payroll practices for salary. And it provides that if she accepts a full-time employment with another entity during this sabbatical period, then the college's obligations would cease. And then, effective June 5th, 2021, I'm sorry, oh yes, and then, effective June 5th of 2021, she was approved by the New College Florida Board of Trustees as a tenured faculty member in the Division of Humanities with a full rank professor. And so, once that period, her sabbatical is over, then she can assume a full-time faculty position, and she would be, at that time, paid an initial base salary of $150,000, or an initial base salary that's equal to the average of the base salary of the top three highest-paid faculty members at the time she assumes full teaching responsibilities, whichever is higher.
Do we know that, I'm guessing that's 150,000? Do we...
There's no reason to.
I honestly don't know what that average is, but I'm guessing that it's probably in that range.
Lower, yeah.
So it would be the 150?
I'm guessing.
Okay, thank you.
And then thereafter, she would be eligible for any salary increases and benefits that would be provided of regular full-time teaching faculty. And then she would release the college of all liabilities once the college satisfies its obligations, and there would be certain provisions of the boilerplate in her existing employment agreement that would continue on, but they're not material in the final analysis.
Great, thank you. So we're, we're voting to accept those negotiated terms, correct?
If, if you vote...
Could I ask a question? The, the original packet that we received last week did not include this new employment contract. This was only emailed to us yesterday. Is that correct? And President Oker, when she opened these comments, said it was her understanding that, quote, "The plan was that this was going to happen." Whose plan? And when was this agenda item added? Because I, I was not aware of any plan.
I, I think there have been, there have been comments in, in social media and the press from several trustees about the intent to...
And so, Mr. Smol, can you clarify what exactly we're voting on to accept this? Can you clarify the actual action that needs to be taken?
No motion on the floor.
I'm not suggesting you make a motion.
What, what I am putting for discussion before the board is whether or not the challenges of leadership have changed substantially, and whether you want to make an amendment to President Oker's contract as a result of that. There, there is no motion that's been presented.
So I think what we're considering right now is whether or not Dr. Oker is the right person moving forward with New College. And I think it's very important that, you know, moving forward, especially with the political considerations, and thank you for your advice, Trustee Ruffo, on that, we should see, especially with this DEI stuff, how exactly we're going to move forward with the college, and I think it's very important for the trustees here to get to know Dr. Oker, to get to know the college and see how it operates. And then I think it would be very smart to make the judgment if you are the right person moving forward, but I think it's premature just at this moment.
I, I would say that, yeah, in, in terms of discussion, look, I think, I think new leadership is the expectation, and I think it makes sense. I don't think it's a condemnation of Dr. Oker's scholarship or skills or, or character. And these terms in the amendment employment contract, I think, make sense. They, they honor her contribution while providing a generous exit package, and so, in my opinion, I, I think that that makes a lot of sense, and, and I'm hoping that we can move forward.
Can we have the crowd be quiet, please?
Thank you.
This is important. Just real quickly, I understand what you said there, Trustee, it's Grace.
Keenan.
Keenan, thank you.
We've got to make this print bigger on... We've got to make this print bigger on these cards.
Yeah, I'll get it eventually. I agree with trustee Ruffo that this isn't necessarily an implication on the job that she's done. I met with President Oker, and I think she's done a tremendous job up until this point. But this doesn't mean that I believe that she's the right person moving forward. This is a different dynamic that we're encountering. And I think it would be fair to her and to the new person that came to understand the full ramifications and then the full challenge of leading this university, or, excuse me, this college, at this time. So, I'll just leave it at that as far as my comments go. And I do, I will say one other thing, that I come with, and I think there's some other people here that have a business background. If I'm looking at this from a business background, I just want to share that what looks horrible and mean, in the end, has I've had to let people go and I've had to say goodbye to people that I care about deeply. In the end, it's always worked out the best for everybody involved. If we look at what New College needs, rather than being led by our hearts and feelings in this matter, and I'm not discounting the hearts and the feelings, again, you can't help but meet Dr. Oker and care for her. She's an amazing person, but we still have a duty to make a decision here based on all of New College. And by the way, I was the one that put this, I think it's worthy of a discussion, if nothing else. I was the one that put this on the board, on the agenda, I think. There's other things that I put on the agenda that didn't make it. So I'm not sure exactly how that works just yet, but I don't want to hide from the fact that I was the one that put this on the agenda. And I do deeply care for Dr. Oker, even whether you agree with me or not.
Trustee Lipinski.
Yeah. So, I think, I accept, I appreciate Eddie's comments. I mean, this is a time when we need to think about what qualities we need in a leader as a board. And I think it's very reasonable with the challenges that are going forward with the school to think about what strengths we really need in a president going forward. And I don't necessarily have the answers to that today, but I think it's important to acknowledge as we sit here, what are the strengths that President Oker brings to this position so that we can understand whether or not those are the particular strengths that are most important to us as a board as we think about how to move forward. And I think one of the things that Pat Oker has done that I don't see, I mean, I've worked both in the private sector and here at the university, I've seen, worked for a number of different leaders, and the thing that President Oker is good at is getting everyone to move together in the same direction, to go and... So, the particular leadership strength that I see in Pat Oker is being able to get people from different parts of campus, from different silos on campus, to come together and look in the same direction. And so, Pat Oker says, "We need to go and we need to improve our enrollment. And in particular, we need to be looking to our backyard in southwestern Florida in order to improve our enrollment because, for some reason, for the past 10 years, we haven't been getting the best and the brightest from Sarasota and Manatee Counties." And so, this isn't just an admissions effort, this is a faculty effort. This is an Office of Outreach and Inclusive Excellence effort because they have connections in our community. This is a career education effort because our career professionals have connections to local businesses. This is a, it's a trustee effort, it's an admissions effort, it's a faculty effort, and she gets everyone moving in the same direction and on the same page with regards to the priorities for the institution. Now, again, oh, thank you. Again, that's not to say, right, that's not to say that, you know, every leader has different strengths and weaknesses. That's not to say that there aren't other leaders that would bring something else that we need to this position. But I think that's the thing that I've been really impressed with in the 18 months that Pat Oker has been here, and I really appreciate that, regardless of how this discussion turns out.
Trustee Spalding.
Yeah, so I opened my comments, and I apologize for making a motion inappropriately, but to point us towards the mission of the college, which is a great mission and a mission I think we should all turn to as our source of unity. Having said that, this college is languishing. It needs to be revived. It's got a great potential future. It can be much larger, much more influential, much more flourishing in the Florida system. The state of Florida has signaled that by an amount of money announced just today, and I think that will continue. I think it's a serious question, given our responsibility, fiscal soundness of the board, and how it is operating in accord with this mission, to also make sure that we have a leadership that is fully committed to that direction. So I think, and I think the terms of this agreement clearly signal a recognition on all parties' parts that current leadership is not appropriate for the situation which we find ourselves.
Trustee Karp, did you want to say something?
Yes. Having the opportunity to work with President Oker over the past year and a half, I came on the board right before she was announced as president, and I can tell you that the college has come a long way in the past year and a half under President Oker's leadership. I agree with all my fellow trustees in saying that the college still has a long way to go, without a doubt. And I would tell you, not looking to speak for President Oker, but she realizes the challenges we have ahead of us, and she, you know, seems like she's very willing and able to help lead us in that direction. What she's accomplished over the past year and a half is truly spectacular. Once again, lots of work still left to be done, but I think that she's been a great leader for us.
I have carefully prepared remarks, and now I'm going off script. This makes me nervous. What I'm about to say, first of all, let me say the support that I feel in this room is tremendous. And what I'm going to say is going to, I'm going to let you down. And I have to explain this, and it's not prepared. We have worked the last 18 months together to craft a vision. I shared a draft with you in December before this happened. That was not my vision. That was our vision. I believe in that vision. You know that the only authority a president has is the ability to persuade and bring people along. People always say, "Pat, you're authentic. You don't do the, you know, blah-blah stuff." And I'm like, I tell it like it is. That is my only way of bringing people along. Other people can do it a different way. This is my way. And the reality is, and it's a hard reality, and it's a sad reality, but the vision that we created together is not the vision that we, I have been given as a mandate here. And that is a hard reality. I do not believe, okay, I'm going to, and I'll also say, I love sunshine laws, but man, you make it really difficult here. I understand that if I say anything here, I trust that you're not going to say, "Well, then we have cause," because I understand that my obligation is to carry out the policies and the plans of this...
President Oker, I don't mean to interrupt you, but may I make a few comments? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'm going to finish, yes.
Let her finish.
Please.
Let's let her finish.
Please, let the trustee speak.
And President Oker, it's with your permission, if you would prefer to continue to speak, that's okay with me, but I would like to say a few remarks, is that...
Yes, you may continue. I will finish. I promise I'll finish.
First, I want to say thank you. Thank you for coming here. Thank you for seeing us through COVID. Thank you for seeing us through a very devastating hurricane. Thank you for getting enrollment up. Thank you for being a friend and a colleague to us on the board. I was vice chair of the committee that recruited you here and became fast friends and a fast admirer of you, and that continues to this moment and will continue in the future. By the points you've made, I take those to heart. We recruited you for a specific set of circumstances, and you were the absolute right person at the right place at the right time. But the world has changed around us, and I know this is not going to be popular, but I think the terms that were presented in our packet are fair. So I'd like to make a motion that we terminate President Oker based on the terms reflected in the board packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
May I finish my remarks?
And President Oker, please.
And again, my deepest apologies to the people for whom I'm disappointing here. My deepest apologies. But I'm going to say publicly, I do not believe that students are being indoctrinated at New College. I believe a president needs to stand behind her words when she asks donors to contribute. It is the only way that I can be effective. You cannot ask me to go forward and argue that we are indoctrinating students here. I do not believe it. I understand there's difference of opinion about that, but I will not be persuasive on this point because I know it to be different. I believe that great change is necessary at this college. Great change on both some academics and a lot on facilities and some other issues. Great change. I'm not opposed to thinking about change, but our students are not indoctrinated here at New College. They are taught, they read Marx, and they argue with Marx. When we, our students take world religions, they do not become Buddhists in February and turn into Christians in March. It is, we read texts, we engage with them, we are, and we can read and be critical about them, ask questions. This is what we do here at this college. So I feel like when I'm given this new mandate where this is a hostile takeover and a dramatic change in mission...
President Oker, I don't mean to interrupt you again, but as a friend, let me make a suggestion. Why don't you...
No, I, he's trying to help. I need help here.
Maybe you...
See Kristaldi.
Please, let him speak.
Would want to finish your remarks after the vote, so there's no implication that you're taking any position. It's up to you, again, I don't mean to impinge upon your comments.
I will stop here. I would like to make remarks at the end, but I, I'll stop.
Before we vote...
The motion in a second.
Can we hear maybe from legal counsel about what this would mean? And so, because I mean, presidential searches take months, there's so many different laws and regulations around them. What would this look like?
Well, I think there'll need to be an appointment of an interim president, and then you'll immediately need to start a presidential search in accordance with the board governor's rules and our rules.
And do we appoint the interim?
Yes. Okay. Yes, but it's subject to board of governors' approval. Trustee Bowerline.
I'll just say that among the deep changes that Pat mentioned, I would add that the campus needs a deep culture change. You've sat up here, you've called us racists, sexists, bigots, outsiders.
Please, please. You're proving his point. You realize that, right? Okay, go ahead.
You have to realize that we are now in a position of, some position of authority in the college, and the accusations that they're telling us are telling us that something is wrong here. This is not the way for you to address people who actually have good intentions for the education of the young in America. You can disagree, but the attacks, the vilification, the insults show there needs to be a deep culture change on campus, and it should have happened a long time ago.
Agreed.
Can I just make one clarification about that fact? Because I'm not at all doubting that those things were said to the board, but I just want to make sure we're being clear of what is being said by the public and what is being said by members of New College community. And so, all the professors and students that did come up and speak, and I wasn't able to attend the Wednesday event, but I believe everyone who was there said that it was members of the public who were making claims and calling these names at the trustees. So I want to make that clear distinction, and it can be hard because our meetings have to be public to make that clear distinction, but every student and faculty has been incredibly respectful. And I think what I've been telling the students is that this is a very good improvement to New College, to have a full, active board, and they understand that fact.
I agree, but being at the Wednesday meeting, I don't think it's as clear as you might be stating it.
Well, at least today, what I have been present for, all the faculty and students of New College have been incredibly respectful.
Fair enough.
Thank you, trustee Keenan. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Before you do that, I'd love to hear President Oker's remarks.
And she's going to hold them to the end.
She's going to make those remarks after the vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Remind me how the resolution is worded, so I know which...
So we're amending President Oker's employment agreement as presented by general counsel.
Yes.
Is that a vote yes?
Yes, vote yes.
Trustee Bowerline.
Yes.
Trustee Jinks.
Approved, yes.
Trustee Karp.
No.
Trustee Keenan.
No.
Trustee Kessler.
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski.
No.
Trustee Mackey. Trustee Ruffo.
Yes.
Trustee Spalding.
Yes.
Trustee Spear.
Just to be clear, this is to terminate the contract and accept the amendment. Yes.
Chair Ruiz.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Kristaldi.
Yes.
May I make closing, can I make remarks, Madam Chair?
The motion carries. President Oker?
To the people of New College, it's been my honor and privilege to serve as your president for the last 19 months. Today is a sad day, and certainly not the end that I imagined when I joined this remarkable college. But as sad as I am, I cannot help but also feel gratitude. You have welcomed me and my family, you have worked with me to tackle big challenges, and you have shown your steadfast commitment to making this wonderful college even stronger. And for that and for so much more, I will be forever grateful. Most of you know that I love hearing New College stories. I see some of the people who have shared stories with me here in the room. I will hold these stories close to my heart. And this afternoon, I ask that you indulge me in sharing one very small story from my childhood. It's hardly a story, actually, or maybe it's a story whose ending is not yet written. I was blessed to be raised by parents with a deep faith in God. Between Sunday School, two services on Sunday, catechism on Wednesday, and choir, my siblings, my parents, and my grandparents and I spend a lot of time in church. Of those experiences, my favorite time by far was singing the song "This Little Light of Mine." I did not know the theological basis of the song or the debates I've learned since, but that song gave me inspiration and courage when I needed it most. Maybe you know it. This little light of mine, I'm going to let it shine. And don't worry, I'm not breaking into song. But my favorite part of this favorite song was the second verse. Hide it under the bush, oh no, I'm going to let it shine. To the students of New College, I see you. I offer these two final thoughts. First, know that you are truly loved here, not just for what you do, but for who you are. And second, the light that is within you, don't hide it under a bush, let it shine. Thank you. [applause][1776.63]
We now have another duty and that is to appoint an interim, which is subject to Board of Governors' approval. We cannot allow there to be a gap in who is in charge of New College should there be an emergency. And so, that is something we need to undertake now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
First, I'd like to begin by thanking President Oker and for those gracious remarks, but on the assumption that we do need to do as you had in going to have immediate governance, I have a suggestion, like to make a three-part motion. I've been speaking to a very qualified individual and that's Richard Corcoran, who's a former Commissioner of Education. His standing and experience in higher education will help steady the ship and keep it on course. He's available at the beginning of March. Recognize the immediate need, I would also move that the current Chief of Staff, Mr. Bradley Thiessen, assume the powers of President until such time as he, Mr. Corcoran, is available. And third, that we authorize the Chair to work on the details of that arrangement with Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Thiessen.
Second.
So if I understand this, Thiessen is the interim and then Corcoran is interim?
He's not available, Mr. Corcoran is not available till March, beginning of March. In the meantime, we can't have the powers of the President be nowhere. I propose they go, they devolve to Mr. Thiessen. So in this instance, you could say there's a very brief interim before a interim, full-time interim, if you will, starting after that.
Full-time interim, okay.
It's a semantic distinction.
Dr. Thiessen?
Would you accept the interim appointment?
Yes, I'd accept it.
I've met with Dr. Thiessen. He's a statistics PhD, accomplished professor, administrator, has a good handle on New College. And in my meetings with a number of people, I felt that he was also the strongest choice to steady the ship before we can have a full-time interim.
I would second those comments after meeting with Mr. Thiessen. So yes, I agree.
Madam Chair, can I ask, Trustee Spalding, did you or anybody else speak to Mr. Corcoran? I just want to make sure that we're not offering the position to someone that none of us have gotten any kind of confirmation from that they're willing to do.
Yeah, no, I've spoken with him. We're actually old friends and talk often and he's willing to serve the college and his experience currently on the Board of Governors, but also as Commissioner will be an excellent choice in my opinion.
So would we be voting to appoint Dr. Thiessen as immediate interim? And then would we, are we also currently voting to appoint Dr., Mr. Corcoran?
Corcoran.
In March?
Well, the third part is the Chair would negotiate those details.
We do have, we do have a meeting at the end of February. So there is another meeting before the availability.
Yeah, I would not be comfortable appointing someone that we've been provided no information with. So possibly we could move that discussion to the February meeting? Does that make sense?
I think under the circumstances, it's good to clarify what's going on and I see no reason to postpone that. As a practical matter, that means that you'll have somebody here until March.
Oh, sorry, not Dr. Thiessen.
But I think it's important for us now to authorize the Chairman to begin those discussions in earnest.
Oh.
Rather than wait until February and then you're postponing it even further.
Got you.
Trustee Spalding, if I could, I'm just trying to think through the logistics. One concern I have is just if we make a motion that has a change in it within, kind of as such time as someone's ready, we won't know when that triggers particularly. So would you consider making the motion to appoint Mr. Thiessen as interim Chair until such time as the organization enters into an interim Chair agreement with Mr. Corcoran?
You mean President, right?
No, interim.
I'm sorry.
Interim President.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, thank you. I meant interim president, yes, sir.
That's correct. And then we authorize the Chair to do so.
Mr. Smoker, is that?
Yes, I think that that's procedurally proper, keeping in mind that once Mr. Corcoran assumes the interim role, we will still have to do a presidential search, by the way.
Correct. Understood.
I'm sorry, just for my benefit, because I wasn't here when we did the search for Dr. Oker. How long does it typically take to do a presidential search in Florida?
We did ours in nine months. And you all know how hard I pushed you all to get you that. So nine to 12 months is typical, but many of them have taken longer.
So just to clarify again, we would authorize the Board Chair to enter into discussions with Mr. Corcoran about the possibility of being interim? Or are we right now voting to assure this person they will be interim once March hits?
I think we're approving the idea and authorizing the President to proceed with those negotiations.
I think if, Trustee Keenan, if I understand correctly, and certainly not trying to put words in anyone's mouth, the motion is to approve Mr. Corcoran, Secretary Corcoran, as the interim Chair, subject to entering into terms with the Chair, interim President, sorry, I keep misspeaking, subject to negotiating terms with the Chair.
My only concern is that we've been provided no information on him and so, until that point, I don't feel comfortable voting. But I think it's great that we can have the conversation of whether or not this is the right person for interim. Does that make sense?
We have a motion and a second on the table.
That's why it's called interim.
What do you mean?
Meaning it's not a permanent decision, there's to have to be a search.
Well, I think it's very.
But we need somebody to run the college in the interim. I think someone with experience that we all, many of us know, who's shown keen interest in preserving this college and its mission and its work.
And Secretary Keenan?
And he has great relationships with the legislature, which is going to be an essential partner. That's the reality of the situation.
Yeah, I think, I have no doubt that this person is fully qualified. My only concern is I do not know them and so I wouldn't be comfortable voting on this person. But especially since interim could be, as we said, nine months and since we will have Dr. Thiessen until March, we have a little bit more time to just get to know this person, hear their qualifications, which I'm sure they have plenty, I have no doubt about that. And then just hear the possibility if there is somebody else, possibly from internally from the school, who might step up, who would know the inner workings of New College, just because this could be nine months to a year and we're going to be enacting a lot of changes in that time and we really need somebody who understands New College or is just going to establish relationships with the people here so we can properly enact those changes. I think that's very critical. So if we don't need to make the decision on the March appointment today, I think that would be good until we're provided with more information.
We do have a meeting scheduled on February 28th.
I think we should vote as is. We have a motion and a second. And if you're not comfortable, you can abstain or vote no, that's always an option.
Well, I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I don't know how the other trustees feel. I've never, I have not heard of this person and I don't know their information. And I think as a board, we have an obligation to make smart decisions in these situations and have evidence for them. And so I have no, it's not that I would be against this person as interim, I just think it's proper for us to be provided with maybe some type of resume or have the opportunity to research this person, if that makes the most sense, especially since we do have time in our February meeting.
Trustee, Trustee Keenan, first, your questions are very well taken and your thoughtful process in selecting an interim president even is very well taken. I don't know because I haven't talked to anybody in advance, but I'm presuming that the Richard Corcoran that Trustee Spalding is talking about is a former Speaker of the House in the state of Florida and then former Secretary of Education in the state of Florida. So just, I want, you may not know that, so I just want to make sure you understand. And Trustee Spalding, I'm presuming that's the Richard Corcoran.
That's correct. And I think the college would be remiss to miss that opportunity, given the fact that his close connection with the legislature is going to assure the very thing that's going to lead to this college really flourishing. So I think it's a great, it's a great opportunity that we should jump at.
And I think many of us know and trust Secretary Corcoran from prior experience. I certainly do. I think he's a, a sortative leader, very dynamic, he's going to make things happen and he's going to take a position like this in order to succeed and.
I have no doubt that it's a great opportunity.
Please, please.
But probably hear from others and then move on.
Are there others who'd like to make a comment? So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Bowerline?
Yes.
Trustee Jinks?
Yes.
Trustee Karp?
Yes.
Trustee Keenan?
I apologize, are we, what exactly are we voting on? Is it for all three parts?
It's all three parts. That was the original motion.
No.
Trustee Kessler? Trustee Kessler?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Abstain.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
Yes.
Trustee Spear?
Yes.
Chair Ruiz?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Kristaldi?
Yes, and Madam Chair and Mr. Smoker, just, I'm not 100% sure about this, but I think there's a regulation that unfortunately, Trustee Lipinski and Madam Chair.
That is correct.
Requires a vote, abstaining is not permissible under the law.
That is correct.
For particularly for what motions?
The one currently on the table.
I'll ask Mr. Smoker if he's familiar with it and speak to it. I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, I just want to make sure we're following procedure.
You're required to vote unless you have a prohibited conflict of interest or a conflict of interest that's not prohibited, but that is required to be disclosed. So.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I don't, I don't know that I have enough information to make a decision right now. It seems like there's a bunch of people on this board who trust Mr. Corcoran, so I'm willing to go along with the board's majority and say yes.
Chair votes yes. So the motion carries.
Shame, 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 shame.
So the next item up is the election of the Board Chair and Vice Chair. These positions are filled at the annual meeting, which typically is in August or September. The terms are for two years and so both the Chair and the Vice Chair have a year and a half left to go. But I am willing to resign at the end of this meeting to allow, to allow for leadership to be chosen that this board will rally behind and have full confidence in. And so, willing to entertain the wishes of the board.
I would accept that and move that as Board Chairman, I would nominate Trustee Deborah Jinks.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. So the motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think.
Chairperson Ruiz, I will be in touch with you.
Do we want to entertain Vice Chair at this time?
If I might. So I have had the pleasure of serving as Vice Chair because my peers asked me to do that. I would be happy to continue to do that or be happy to step aside if someone else would like to volunteer and that certainly won't offend me or hurt my feelings if someone else has interest in doing it.
I second the motion that he remains as Vice Chair.
That wasn't.
I don't think he made a motion.
I'll motion to keep Trustee Kristaldi as Vice Chair.
I don't think that's necessary. It's a discussion. He has to resign in order for that to precipitate an election.
That's correct.
And I think you were asking what the pleasure of the board is and it sounds like there's a consensus that you continue to serve, sir.
And certainly it won't hurt my feelings, anyone speak up because I, again, I want what's best for this organization and I'm happy to do.
So I would like to point out that both the Chair and the Vice Chair continue to be alums of this institution. We also have General Counsel on the Board of Trustees. Mr. Smoker wanted to make some comments. And I was going to make some comments, but.
You first.
All right, so here is the history. In September, our General Counsel resigned to leave for another university. We asked Mr. Smoker to serve on an interim basis for 15 hours a week for a few weeks. It has now been a few months and I wager it's been much more than 15 hours a week. So we have imposed on him, which is why this item is on the agenda, and so, Mr. Smoker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start sort of at the beginning. 51 years ago, I got off a bus in front of Hamilton Center and that started my journey with New College. I graduated.
See me later for details.
I graduated and was fortunate enough to get a job as a city planner in the city of Bradenton as a result of a friendship with another New College graduate. Eventually, I figured out that it seemed like the action was where, was at the city council meeting, it seemed like the lawyers were sort of running the show. So I said, all right, I want to be like them. I went to law school, stayed connected to the college for quite a number of years, served as President of the Alumni Association for a while, and became fast friends with Bob Johnson and Ron Heiser, who are legendary supporters of New College, who in the last week or so, I keep asking myself, what would they be doing under these circumstances? After the legislature spun New College off of USF in 2001, Mike Michelson asked me to step in and serve as the General Counsel to help New College get its feet underneath itself. It's probably simple to say, instant university, just add rules, among other things. And so for about three, two and a half, three years, in addition to my full-time property rights litigation practice, I was also New College's General Counsel. And eventually, they figured out that they really needed somebody full-time in-house and they, since then, have hired a series of full-time General Counsels. But whenever one leaves, I get a phone call. You need to parachute in again, we're looking for another General Counsel. So I think this is the fourth time. I certainly had no idea that I would be sitting here today, right now. I mean, somebody once said, you don't choose the universe, the universe chooses you. So here I am. I know that I got off to a little bit of a rocky start with Trustee Ruffo and Trustee Spear, but I do want you to know that I call it like I see it and I always take a position that I think is ultimately defensible. You're not always right 100% of the time. Judges have told me that over the years and sometimes they've told me I'm right. The one thing that has always guided me in this whole endeavor now for the last 51 years of connection to New College is my love of the college and its mission and the people that you get to know along the way. And so, to me, it's always, I go back to what Ron Heiser used to say when I would ask him like, what do we do now, you know, instant university? And he would say, Dave, ask yourself what's in the best interest of New College. And that's what I do. I try to ask myself, what's in the best interest of New College and what's the law and hope that the two harmonize? I should tell you that I'm also currently a parent of a New College student. So I guess I'm the poster child for constituencies. I have a son, I'm serving, at least right now, as General Counsel and I'm an alum. So I have, my main concern is for the well-being of New College and that's always going to guide me. I will tell you that I have a full-time, you know, litigation practice and trial practice. Started up a new firm a little over a year ago. We got more work than we know what to do with, we're adding new lawyers. So, you know, I'm sort of torn. On the one hand, I would love to be able to help New College under these circumstances, but the practical reality is that, you know, I don't have the time to devote to. but the practical reality is that, you know, I, I don't have the, the time to devote to New College right now, certainly on the day-to-day stuff, you know. Currently, we have two councils, we have, we have Mr. Pierce, who's handling the day-to-day, and we have me, who was assigned dealing with the trustees issues. So exactly how that all plays out, I don't know, it's up to you. I mean, you know, I trust your judgment, one way or another. I'll still be here advocating for what's in the best interest of New College.
So the general counsel reports administratively to, to the president? And I guess with a dotted line to the board?
Yeah, technically, he is in the executive service classification, representing both the college and, and the board.
So what is the pleasure of the board regarding representation?
Madam Chairman, first of all, Mr. Smoker, I thank you very much. I understand the difficulties in which you, having operated as, as a legal counsel for a college, I have great, great experience with that. But I think it is important for the, for the college to have a general counsel for our work. And so I have a motion I'd like to make in, on that front, so that we can proceed in a legal fashion. Bill Galvano, who's a highly qualified lawyer who represented this college in the state legislature, he's an area lawyer, he's a former senate president, was chair of the Higher Education Committee, he is very interested in serving the board in this capacity. And so likewise, I would move that we authorize the chair to engage Mr. Galvano and his firm as a legal counsel for the Board of Trustees.
I, I think it would be more appropriate for us to direct the interim president to make those negotiations, since it's, if you don't mind a friendly amendment.
Happily accepted.
And I would add that I know Bill Galvano. In fact, his firm has represented me in some real estate dealings, totally unrelated to New College.
Good, I take that as an endorsement.
It's a good choice.
Good.
So, just to be clear, the general counsel serves at the president's pleasure, correct?
The, the president hires the general counsel in consultation with the chair, that's been our practice.
But we could still move forward as a board, determining who.
If you direct, if you direct the staff to negotiate with Bill Galvano as an interim counsel, I think, I think that's fine.
This staff, but we could also direct the board to, for Bill Galvano to serve on this board. Two different issues, general, general counsel to the school and also legal representation for this board.
That's an important clarification, trustee Spear, I took your comments to mean we're talking about the general counsel to the board.
To the board, that's correct.
Yeah, let me just, if I, I'm sorry, trustee, I was just going to say, as, as a lawyer, my understanding is the general counsel has ultimately reports to the board. Administratively, on a day-to-day basis, they represent the president, but for instance, if the board directs the general counsel to terminate the president, the, the general counsel works for the board, I serve in that capacity with a lot of private companies. So there's, there's not really two roles. One, the, the general counsel is a position that has a fiduciary obligation to the organization, not to any individuals. It reports directly to the board on overall policy issues, and then is administered by the president, reports to the president on day-to-day operational issues. Certainly, anyone in the room is welcome to take issue with me, but that's my understanding, and Mr. Smoker, is that your?
That's also my understanding, that's why it's probably most appropriate to direct the interim president to negotiate details administratively.
Trustee Spalding, first, let me ask a couple clarification questions. Are you suggesting that Senator Galvano will remain in private practice like Mr. Smoker is and be our outside counsel?
Yes.
Yes, and, and are you suggesting in an interim capacity? Because we, we did, we typically have had a, a full-time employee who was a general counsel. Just want to make sure I understand correctly, are you suggesting that this would be interim and we would recruit a full-time?
Authorize the interim president to talk to him and, and see what kind of relationship to be made, but I think we should choose him going forward as a general counsel for the board.
Full-time, you mean not, not have an internal position?
We should open a discussion to engage him in whatever capacity he's able, I don't know that that would be full-time.
Okay, I just want to.
For the board, we, we want a general counsel.
Understood.
And he's highly qualified, and I think we'd be very good at it.
Just to clarify, kind of where New College is with regard to a full-time permanent general counsel. My understanding is at present, we don't have a full-time general counsel, is that correct?
Correct.
We have two part-time general councils, you're looking at.
Interim.
Interim.
In both cases.
Yeah, two interim, part-time general councils. And clearly, the college needs.
You are one.
I am one.
Focused on the board.
Based on a division, an agreed upon division of responsibilities.
What I'm raising here is that we authorize the interim president to engage with Mr. Galvano to fill the role of a counsel to the board on, on whatever basis can be discussed in those negotiations.
Right, so in the final analysis, you, once the board has Mr. Galvano, there's still a need for the board to hire a, to fill a permanent general counsel role, whether that's Mr. Galvano, I don't know whether he would want that or not, or you still do need to hire a full-time general counsel. There was a search, the search did not end up with a full-time general counsel. However, that process should continue on, and there are, you know, I, I've been contacted by a particular individual who, who I thought was very well-qualified, but he's not a Florida bar licensed lawyer, and the Florida bar, unlike a lot of states, doesn't have reciprocity. So he would have to take the bar, but I understand he would take it in July. You guys would love him, I'm telling you.
I still don't understand why we can't, as a board, direct Bill Galvano to serve us, right here, right now.
No, no, that's not what he's saying.
What I'm trying to suggest.
He's trying to make the case that the, the, the legal work.
There's still another question to be addressed.
There's a lot, you know, contracts, purchasing, employment, there's a raft of work.
In general, that's the general counsel title.
The general, general counsel, understood.
Right. And then counsel to the board being separate.
Well, that, that is what we did on an interim basis, and what trustee Spalding is suggesting is that we continue that, that, that separation of duties.
But then why would the president be the one who makes the determination of who represents the board? That doesn't make sense to me.
Madam Chair, if I could, if I could clarify a little bit.
Clarification.
We, it's very, in my experience, it's very unusual to have two different general councils. I think the issue here was Mr. Smoker just didn't have the capacity to do all the work, and so we were kind of splitting workload. I, I first have a tremendous respect for Senator Galvano, and I'm supportive of him being our counsel. I would highly recommend to the board that we not bifurcate a position and have two lawyers, one advising the board and one advising the university, because in my experience, when that happens, you start to get conflicting opinions, and you start to get fighting within the organization, so we should all be getting the same legal advice.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with that, I think that's probably the right, the right advice. However, I think that right now, this board going forward needs general counsel.
Absolutely.
Mr. Galvano would be highly qualified.
So trustee Cristaldi, we've never had the luxury of this at New College because of resources, but many universities have multiple lawyers, but one is in charge. So there are other models that we can pursue. So I, I think what I'm hearing is, it's a lot of work in total from a man who's done both jobs, and we don't know what Senator Galvano's availability is. And so there's an interest in this board perhaps to bifurcate it, and what I'm suggesting is if that happens, one of them needs to be in charge.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, and I don't, I may be misunderstanding the phraseology, but I don't think we're talking about bifurcating. To give you an example, for instance, like the University of South Florida probably has 20 lawyers who work in-house, but there's one general counsel, right, so they have a lot of people doing responsibility. My only point is, if it's Senator Galvano, that's fine with me, but I think we ought to have one person as general counsel, we could hire other lawyers.
So the next lawyer has another title, is what you're saying.
Right, so in, so in general, this, this is, we're talking counsel to the board.
For a transition period, in essence, yeah.
I think we need one general counsel, and we can devise job descriptions for additional attorneys, but what trustee Cristaldi is advising, and I agree with, is somebody has to be in charge of the legal department, and that is the general counsel. So if you're seeking Senator Galvano as general counsel, then he's the one in charge of finding us another lawyer to do the other duties.
And I'm, again, I'm perfectly fine with Senator Galvano serving as our general counsel, I just want to be clear that that would be the lawyer who's in charge of legal services for our organization. He can, with consultation with the board and the president, the interim president, can choose to hire other outside firms, or can choose to hire people inside, but as of now, we, we should have one person who's the, you know, for one of the better firsts, the Supreme Court and our legal system here.
So is there anything preventing us from, has a board right now, without going to the president, of selecting Senator Galvano right now to serve this board?
So the motion is that we direct staff to negotiate a contract that would have put that into effect. And the clarification we're seeking is, what is the title that Senator Galvano is filling on an interim basis? Because if we're not recommending going forward this bifurcation of duties, somebody has to be in charge of the legal services.
Then is it fair to recommend that he be counsel to the board and interim general counsel until he sees fit to hire somebody else?
I, I think the immediate need is, is that this board going forward needs to have the advice of counsel. There's a qualified person who's very interested in helping us do that. To some extent, the particulars here, recognizing the broader point you've raised, is completely legitimate. I think the immediate need, however, is to engage him as, as general counsel for the board. If you call it interim general counsel for now, just as the Mr. Smokers, that would be fine. I think the practical outcome is to have that, that counsel recognizing at some point in the future, we're going to have to figure out how to properly arrange, the, the college has one general counsel in charge, which might not be Senator Galvano.
Yep, trustee Spear, so just to be clear, trustee Spear, I think what we're saying is general counsel is the counsel to the board, so the title includes being board counsel. And, and trustee Spalding, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but maybe to synthesize a motion, I, I think I understood the motion to be a motion to engage Senator Galvano as general counsel and direct the interim president to engage in negotiations on the terms of compensation for that.
Okay, and who seconded that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion?
My only comment would be, especially considering we're at a public meeting, subject to sunshine laws, to be cautious of when we are suggesting people for positions and calling them friends for, like, as why we're justifying that, there's a lot of ethical implications with that. Of course, not that these people are not completely qualified and that we would be lucky to have them, but just a comment on the ethical considerations of that, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. So the motion carries.